Oh, she's connecting her audio. Jonathan. So we know that the Twilight Club is Katie. Okay. Hello. Looks like I'm mute myself. But it was just connected. Ling. Met. Okay, Michael, it looks like he's calling in. Teacher, this just appeared. Let's see what he says. Hello, Michael.
Yes.
Can you hear us? Is this the preferred way? Or is that you waiting on your computer in the waiting room?
Well, I was gonna do both, just to make sure I got in one way or another. So I'm waiting in the computer, so I can just go ahead and hang up on this.
Okay, I'll admit you that way.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. No. Here's Terry.
Hi, Chloe.
Hi. We're just awaiting. Did Jason end up calling in? He'll be on shortly.
Yeah, they'll all be on. They'll be a minute or two. We got a little break. Katie gave us a break. So a couple minutes.
We're planning to bring everybody back at 6:25, but given that we went a little bit longer, took a short recess.
So Katie, we should get together on the next meeting, the next budget meeting. It sounds like something we want to do before our next board meeting, right?
Correct. Yeah, and because we've got five weeks, I feel like that's great. Like, we've got a little flexibility on when to schedule that. But I totally agree. In the next couple days, like, let's get that on the books.
Okay, why don't you, maybe if you don't mind, just pick a date. I think my calendar's probably more open than yours is. Let me know what works for you, okay?
Okay, I'll talk to Nikki, and she and Nicole can also let me know when they think they'll have numbers. So we'll figure that out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Put that on my list.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, there we go. Okay, I am going to bring us back into open session at 6:26 PM. We have no reportable action from closed session. We completed our six-month evaluation alongside our district director. And a summary of those results will be compiled by Betsy and then forwarded to Nikki for her review and inclusion in her file. So that is where we are in that. And I just want to apologize to everybody for our much-delayed start. Thank you all so much for your patience. I really am sorry. Unfortunately, this is one of those things that is a super high priority. So it takes a little bit, kind of the time it takes. So thank you for your patience. I really appreciate it. At this time, we'll come back into open session. We did our roll call at the beginning. So at this point, I'll ask for any reordering of agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they want to change around? Okay, then, hearing none, I'm gonna ask that we proceed directly to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt it, please?
I move to adopt it.
Okay, and a second. Perfect. Okay, oh my God, we don't have Gwen. Where's Gwen?
She is not in yet, and she has, she's not in the waiting room yet either.
Okay, then we're waiting. Sorry, we have a quorum, but still, we'll wait for her.
While we're waiting, does anybody know if it's legal to second a motion like this? Or do I have to unmute myself and say second?
I think you're supposed to say it, yeah.
You gotta, although I liked it, it was kind of, kind of cool.
I thought it was rather jaunty, but oh well.
I'm into it. I'm into it. We'll give Gwen just a couple more seconds here.
I'm gonna text Gwen, you guys.
Okay, thank you. Chloe here. Otherwise, everyone else that we know who could be here is here. I want to make sure I lock the meeting once. I want to make sure I lock the meeting once Gwen's here. This, I think this is everyone. Okay, thank you.
Chloe, do we have any additional public comment that's come in, other than what Stella sent me earlier today?
No, and we have had no phone calls.
Okay. So I'll say this, just sort of for the record while we're waiting for Gwen. But we've got two phone lines open. If people want to call in and make a public comment at any point during the meeting, obviously, in normal circumstances, that would need to be tied to an agenda item or to, you know, public comment on a non-agenda item. Honestly, if anybody wants to call in kind of at any point, we'll include them as soon as we can. So whenever the current discussion, you know, wraps, we'll put them next, just because of the difficulty of including public comments. So anybody who calls in, we'll hear you as soon as we can. Nikki, do you have her?
She's speaking with her now.
Okay, great.
We're resending the link to Gwen, to see if she can get in. She's trying to get in right now.
And Katie, it looks like the chat feature was disabled in our overall setting. So if we have any public comment, I'm gonna go like this. If you see on gallery view.
Yep.
Okay, that will be my signal if there's a public comment coming in.
I will keep my eye open. Otherwise, I'll just feel like you're really approving, which will make me very validated.
As long as it'll let me remove the thumbs up.
Yes, I still see it.
Okay, clapping hands mean no, thumbs up means that there's a public comment. I'm sorry, it won't let me remove it from my reading.
Got it, okay, so if it changes to a thumbs up, that means we have a public comment. All right, perfect. Also, feel free to just interrupt me anytime.
Okay.
That might be easier.
And Gwen is joining right now. I just allow her.
Okay, perfect. All right, now we've got everybody. Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, so we're all here. Let's do a quick roll call, just for the, just for the heck of it. Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Kapal.
Here.
Trustee Khan. Betsy, would you unmute yourself and say you're here? Sorry.
Sorry, I'm distracted because the sun's in my face. I am here.
Valid. Trustee McMillan.
Here.
And I'm here too. Okay, perfect. So, given that I hear no requests to reorder anything on the agenda, can I have, once again, a motion to adopt the agenda?
I so moved the, we adopt the agenda.
Okay, and a second?
A second.
Great, so moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
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 Perfect, none opposed. So the agenda's approved. We're gonna come to D, public comment on non-agenda items. I believe we do not have anything presently.
Okay.
Like I said earlier, if something comes in later on, we'll entertain it whenever it comes in, and that's totally fine. So, without further ado, I'd like to hand it over to our special presenters. And once again, Mike, Sarah, I really want to thank you guys for your patience and for your time this evening. So I will hand it over to you, and thank you so much for being here with us.
No problem. Give me one moment. We have a presentation to share with you, so let me go ahead and get that up, so we can share our, my screen. But I think we have to have the host enable participant screen sharing to do that.
And just for the record, this meeting has been locked, so I'm gonna allow the sharing of screens just in this locked meeting, so we are secure. All right, Sarah, you're good to go.
I promise there's nothing inappropriate in my presentation. Okay, can you all see the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so we are here today to talk to you about a proposed community facilities district that may fund library facilities. And so we'll walk through this brief presentation about the process of forming the CFD, some of the timing issues, and then give you a chance to ask any questions you might have. Just to make sure it's advanced to the next slide on your end as well. Perfect, okay. Um, so we'll talk a little bit about legislative context around the CFD and other revenue-raising measures. We'll talk about special financing districts a little more specifically. And then the CFD process in a lot of specificity on the formation and the bond issuance process. And then just to give you a flavor, because it is a little bit different than the current process you have for the parcel tax that you have in place that NBS works on, we'll give you some information about the ongoing annual process, just so you have some, kind of start to finish what to expect with a CFD. In terms of the legislative context, really all funding that we look at goes back to Proposition 13. So we'll talk about that for a moment, and then we'll talk specifically about the Mueller's Community Facilities Act of 1882. So Proposition 13, I like to start here, especially in a public setting, just to give people that context. I don't know how much you all, you know, know specifically about Proposition 13, or perhaps even remember when it was adopted. The measure was voter-approved in 1878. And what that had the effect of doing was to limit the increase of assessed valuation to 2% a year and put a rate cap on ad valorem property tax values of 1% of the value. So it really limited the amount of revenue that public agencies can raise in terms of general property tax. You don't really have the ability to gain any other revenue as it relates to general property tax. You can't increase that because your costs are increasing. It is what it is based on these value limitations, and that's encapsulated in the Constitution in Article 13A. Because of those limitations, public agencies have had to look elsewhere for other funding mechanisms. I mentioned the parcel tax that you currently have in place that funds services for you. One of the other options available to you is the Mueller's Community Facilities District. That was enacted in 1882, that law, and it was in response to Proposition 13. This gives another mechanism for public agencies to raise revenue. A CFD requires only that there is a reasonable special tax methodology and apportionment of special tax. So we can come up with whatever reasonable methodology we would like and that we can gain approval on from voters in terms of spreading that special tax. The only thing we are precluded from using to calculate the special tax is value of property. In general, public property is exempt from a special tax under the Mueller's Community Facilities Act. And that is codified in California Government Code Section 53311 and following, if anyone just wants that reference. So digging a little more deeply on the community facilities district, I'm not sure if you're familiar with assessment districts versus special taxes. Those two words are often used interchangeably, but they do not mean the same thing when it comes to the law. Assessments are benefit-based. They have to be supported by a engineer's report prepared by a registered professional engineer. And the process to approve is a majority protest ballot proceeding. And just, that's just to contrast the community facilities district, which is not benefit-based. This is a special tax where the allocation of the tax is done by any reasonable metric and it has to achieve the local goals and policies that you all set. So the very first step for creating a CFD is actually adoption of those local goals and policies, so that you have control and guidance as to how this tool will be used in your community and within your district. The CFD is approved by a vote of registered voters, and it is a two-thirds vote, just like any other tax. It is possible, and I have a note here about the CFD landowner vote, and that is in a case only where there are 12 or fewer registered voters. That's not the situation in your district. Your district obviously has more than 12 registered voters, so we would be looking at that registered voter vote for the approval. And a sample list of services, I mean, the, the list really goes on. It, you know, fire protection, ambulance, paramedic, library, which is clearly what you're funding, but we can also fund facilities. And really, any facility that has a useful life of five years or more. But specifically, the CFD law allows for library facilities to be constructed. So this is a chart that shows the formation process. And so we start over at the beginning with the initiation process. And so we would, we can initiate the process by the local agency. So if we have two members of the legislative body, or majority approval of the legislative body, we do not need a petition from landowners or registered voters to begin. But once we have that, we would need to adopt local goals and policies if they're not already in place. From there, we move to the resolution of intention. And that resolution is where you are approving the boundary of the CFD, the name of the CFD, describing the services, establishing that rate and method of apportionment that tells how much each property will pay and what the manner of collection is. We'll fix a time and place for the public hearing, and we'll describe the voting procedures. At that time, in order to create a facility CFD, we would also be looking at a resolution of intention to incur debt. And so that would just be really declaring the necessity for the debt, disclosing the amount of the debt, and fixing a time and place for public hearing. Between 30 and 60 days later, the public hearing would be held. So that's a noticed public hearing. And after the public hearing is opened and closed, just another series of resolutions would be considered. The resolution of formation would approve the, the services and facilities to be funded. We would identify the party that's responsible for preparing the annual levy. We would typically just refer to the director or perhaps a finance manager or something of that nature. That can also be a consulting firm. We state that the lien, a lien will be recorded, and we identify the recording information from the boundary map. And that's, that's the point that we set the election. So it may sound a little odd sometimes to consider the fact that you are forming the district before the election, but you do actually adopt this resolution and a resolution to incur debt and set, and call for the election. So, once you've adopted that resolution of formation and resolution to incur debt, then your election is held, not less than 90 or more than 180 days later. Again, that's a two-thirds registered voter approval. And from there, once you have the approval and confirmation of the election results, assuming those are positive, then you would certify the election results, adopt an ordinance to levy the special tax, and authorize the bond issuance. Steps to follow that take another, you know, couple of months would be execution of the debt instrument and actual funding of the bond. And so that's the point that you would have the funds in hand to be able to begin construction of your facility. Things are, are pretty tight to get us to Election Day. It seems like it's a little ways off, but there are several steps in between. And so we're really at the point that if you choose to proceed towards that November 3rd Election Day, we would need to begin drafting the CFD documents, that rate and method of apportionment, the various resolutions and so forth, here in the next, hopefully, few days even. Going to June 12th, which is the agenda deadline for the June 22nd board meeting. At that board meeting, that would be where you would consider all of those resolution of intention and resolution of intention to, to incur debt items. And that would lead us to the July 17th agenda deadline for the July 27th public hearing. That's when the public hearing would be held, the resolution of formation, calling the election, all of that would occur. August 7th is the deadline to submit the resolution consolidating the election to the county for the November 3rd, 2020 Election Day. So this just kind of lays out that timing for you. It is a pretty quick schedule to be able to get to that November 3rd Election Day. So I do want to mention that with a CFD, you do have the ability to hold an election, a special mail ballot election, on any other day you choose. So you are not limited to the November 3rd Election Day with a CFD, as you might be with other revenue-raising measures. So just to keep that in mind, if this is feeling a little too compressed, a little too quick for you. And I will turn it over to Mike here to talk about the bond issuance process.
Okay, good evening. My name is Mike Williams. I'm with the firm of Columbia Capital Management. And basically, our duties with this CFD formation would be to, you know, review all the documents and the process as Sarah's firm, NBS, you know, takes you through that. Once the election is held, the next procedure would be in the November, December timeframe to have the election results certified and enact a special ordinance and record a notice of special lien. After that, the finance team could be assembled, like in the January, February timeframe. And what that would entail is because of a bond financing is a sale of municipal securities, you need some legal advice and opinions. And so I would help the, the district select those other consultants that you'll need for drafting the documents, the legal documents, and also the offering document for the sale of bonds. Then we'll take, you know, Then we'll take, you know, information about the district and the demographics of the district. And we would submit a, a credit package to a rating agency. So this is, this is similar to somebody, you know, getting a mortgage loan. It goes through kind of the same process where your ability to repay the loan is evaluated. And just like with getting a FICO score, you actually get a, a rating. And the higher your rating, the lower your cost of interest. There are possibly two different ways to go. In the, prior to the coronavirus pandemic. There were many, many banks and financial institutions that would make direct loans to governmental agencies. And that has kind of slowed for a couple of reasons. Number one is the credit concerns, but number two, a lot of the banks now are busy processing those. Payroll protection loans. And so that's a good thing to, you know, to get people financed and get money in the hands of people that need it at this time. So, you know, we can make a decision later on after the election, which is the appropriate way to go. But most of these large financings, like over, you know, five or ten million dollars. Are more efficient to be done by a municipal bond issue. Because we can issue municipal bonds for maturities, you know, with repayment terms out twenty-five or thirty years. Which lowers the burden on the taxpayers. Anyway, so after the review of the credit and the assembly of all the financial documents. We'll come back to the board for your approval. And then, once we get the approval for, on the legal documents. Will actually go out into the market and, and sell the bonds. And once those bonds are sold, we'll finalize the, what's referred to as the official statement, which is a memorandum. Detailing a lot of information about the district and the terms and covenants for your debt. And after, after that is done, there's actual, the closing and the receipt of the money. And so you'll have monies for the project. So that could happen, you know, fairly quickly, like. The spring or early summer of next year. So I'll turn this back to Sarah now for the remainder of the process.
So, once you have a CFD in place, as I mentioned, the, the process is a little bit different than the parcel tax that you currently have. In terms of the ongoing annual administration, there are a few more requirements in place as it relates to a CFD versus a parcel tax. There still is the work to do the annual levy submittal in August. So we would, you know, of course, that annual levy calculation and verification of parcel data and so forth would be done. And then we, of course, would be calculating the total levy amount based on the debt service payment that is coming up due in the next year. In addition to that, there are some specialized reporting items that need to occur. One of them is SB one sixty-five, that's just a, a brief financial report that's filed with the board on an annual basis. There's some other things related to bond issuance. Not sure if you've heard of CDAC, the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission. There are a couple of reports that need to be filed with that agency on an annual basis with the CFD. Pretty minimal type things, but they are, of course, required related to the administration. The, you know, we would look at, perhaps depending on how the rate and method of apportionment was written. This is a, you know, of course, a pretty built out area, so we may not need to review building permits. But we would certainly be looking at all of your parcel data on an annual basis, determining if there's a CPI inflator, anything like that. Within the RMA that needs to be updated. We would look at the, take property on our phone calls, monitor delinquencies. And of course, when you have a bond issue, you have continuing annual disclosure that is due either in the case of a private placement to a bank. Likely due to the, to the bank itself, but if you have municipal bonds that are sold in the market, then you would need to post. That continuing disclosure to the electronic municipal marketplace or Emma. And so, you know, we would, you know, that, that, that annual process is something that we would walk through. And again, it looks similar to that parcel tax, but the bonds definitely add another layer of work that needs to be done there. And we'll, we'll pause for questions and comments, but I'll back up for a quick second because I realize I, I assumed that you all know who NBS is. Because we work with you currently on the parcel tax and I realized that, that you might not saw. I'll just pause for a brief moment and go back to the beginning and introduce myself a little bit better. NBS is a consulting firm that works solely with government agencies. And we currently administer the parcel tax that you all have. And so we place that levy on the tax rule and monitor those delinquencies and that sort of thing for you for the parcel tax. I am the director for our district formation consulting group. And I specialize in CFD formations along with other types of special district financing. So things like the assessment district that I mentioned, parcel taxes, et cetera. And I am a municipal advisor, registered municipal advisor representative. So with that, we'll open for questions and comments from you all.
Okay, so I think at this point, I'd like to open up the floor for any questions, observations, comments from the board. You know, we've got some specific actions later on in the agenda that dovetail with this whole process. But I, I'd like to open up a, a more broad discussion at this point. So if anybody has anything they'd like to ask or any observations they'd like to make at this point, that'd be great.
I've got a couple of things, this is Terry. And that is, at the very beginning, Sarah, you talked about it needs only to be a reasonable special tax method. You know, you kind of lost me there, does that mean that we don't necessarily have to be a property tax based? You know, measure, it can be something else, can you take me through that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. A CFD is a land secured financing mechanism. So it is levied and collected on the property tax rolls. And, and though not to say that there are not other manners in which you could collect. For example, if you have a property that for whatever reason doesn't receive a property tax bill from the county tax collector. You would have the opportunity to direct bill. However, it is a land secured financing, so it would, it is a, a tax that is on property. And so it would need to be some sort of property based methodology. And so when I talk about it being a reasonable methodology, that could be based on the. Size of the property in some, in some cases. In this case, it probably makes the most sense to look at various land uses and have different rates based on land use. Say, commercial versus residential versus multifamily, perhaps paying a separate rate.
So, me living in Altadena, getting a property tax bill from the county every couple of times a year. I would see on my bill two line items for Altadena Library in terms of.
Yep, you would see your existing parcel tax and then you would see this Altadena Library CFD.
Okay, and then also, the other question, I think you answered it, but I'm not sure. The CFD, the money that comes from this can be split in terms of its usage between capital projects and operations, right? Is there, there's no covenants on how it needs to be spent?
Correct, well, so you need to specify at the outset what you're doing. So the resolution of intention has to specify what facilities or what services are being funded. And so you have to say at the beginning what it is you're going to do. And then the special tax rates have to be calculated so that they will. Obviously, you can't take money to pay for services if you have debt to repay. You would need to pledge amounts for debt service payments and that sort of thing. But yeah, you would, you can do both with the same CFD. You can do both facilities financing and services funding.
And then there was just a technical question I had, and that was that, once this is worked through, you, you can't. You, you have to file for the election within ninety days, not, not less than ninety days, but not more than a hundred and twenty days. It was some caveat there, and I just wondered, it hit me that maybe if we're bringing this to, to the county. Or, you know, to, to sort of register this by August the seventh for the ballot. Does that put it inside the window, or I should maybe say outside the window for the election day, which is in early November? Just a little technical thing.
Yeah, so there's actually two, kind of, two, two different statutes that we're working with. So one is the elections code, and that requires that the resolution consolidating the election be submitted to the county. Eighty-eight days prior to the election, so that's part of elections code, that's part of what the elections officials of the county are looking for. Then you have CFD law kind of layered on top of that. And CFD law requires that your public hearing is at least ninety, but not more than a hundred and eighty days prior to your election. And so you would be looking at your July board meeting as your public hearing, which was July, I believe, twenty-seventh. I'll go back to that slide real quick. Yeah, July twenty-seventh is your board meeting, so that is roughly a hundred days. So we're right within that window of ninety to a hundred and eighty days later on the election from the public hearing.
Okay, got it, that clears it up, because I thought maybe we would have to move up our August seventh date for getting it to the county. But that doesn't sound like that's the problem.
No, that's just the deadline to actually take that resolution that was adopted on July twenty-seventh and deliver it to the county.
That was all I have for right now. I, I, I comment, I guess, and that is that there are lots of activities regarding reporting the bond and how it's used and everything else. If I heard you right, NBS can take care of those items for us, right?
Yep, absolutely, we do that for lots of clients. And there are, every time we turn around, there's another requirement about reporting something about special taxes or, you know, something else. And, and they're typically pretty minimal, but we'll, you know, we can just add those on, even new requirements that come online as we move through the process.
Okay, and then to what extent do we need to have our construction timeline sort of locked in? By the time we get our money, you're talking about early next summer, is it, is it something that we need to demonstrate to the public? Basically that we've got that all covered before we even get the money?
So when you issue bonds, you should have a reasonable expectation that you'll spend the money within three years. So, but no, and you certainly, the, the bond issuance timeframe that we laid out gets you money pretty quickly after the CFD is. Passed, but you certainly don't have to issue bonds that quickly. Should you need more time on the planning side of your facility, you would be able to take a little bit more time prior to bond issuance.
I, I just have one comment to make on that too. And that is, you know, if you had a large capital project, let's say you had a, you were going to build a new library building. It was, let's say the budget or the engineer's estimate was like eight or ten million dollars. What we'd actually want to do is we'd want to get everything approved, we'd want to get all the legal documents approved. We get our rating, and then we'd, we'd actually wait till the library received bids. And then, once you accepted the bid, then we could, we would know exactly how much money we would need. And we could issue only that amount, so we could also issue several bonds just as you needed the money.
Mike, I think that's exactly the situation we're in, right? So are you saying that it would make more sense to have the entire project costed out? And then proceed to the process of, of financing?
Well, you know, we have, we have time to, we have time to do that because our first hurdle is getting the voters' approval. And once we have that, then we'll, you know, then we can take a look at what the, the construction timing is.
I'm not, I'm not following you, so you're, I, I thought what you just said was that it would make sense to issue a bond. For exactly the amount of money that we would need to accomplish the construction project. Wouldn't we need to know that information before we proceeded to a vote?
No. You know.
I don't understand that.
Okay, so, so one of the, one of the things that is going to happen, you know, pretty quickly here, is you're going to hire. A, a company to do some polling with your voters. And they're going to find out, you know, what the sensitivity is to voters. For what, what tax they're willing to pay. And that is going to help determine, you know, what the total dollar amount of bonds that we can issue. In addition to the services that you want to collect for. So, it's, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. Our first hurdle is to, you know, have a successful election. And then, you know, once you get the polling data back, you'll know kind of what the sensitivity of your voters in the, in the library district is. Because that's going to determine, you know, what your project funds will be.
So essentially, the ballot measure would say approve up to X dollar amount. That would be set based on the polling. And then when we actually issue the bonds, we decide on a specific number down to the dollar or whatever. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and as Sarah said before, there's, there's two components, you can. You can get a certain amount of money per year. As she talked about by properties, for example, like a single family residential property, you know. It'll be X dollars for multifamily, it'll be a different amount for commercial property, it'll be a different amount. And when you take all that together. That's, that's the money you have to work with. But also, Sarah, maybe you want to talk about this a little bit, about what the decision process is for them. As far as what their maximum amount of bond capacity or bond authorization will be.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think you want to have some, some idea of what those project costs are, right? We need to, we need to at least understand order of magnitude, do you, you know, are the improvements you want to do? Or is that a five million dollar project or fifteen million dollar project, a thirty million dollar project? Or multiple projects. And so I think you need to, you do need to have some, some level of understanding as to what the. Dollar amounts are that you're going to be looking for, and the, the polling firm will want to know. They'll be asking me, actually, they don't, they don't just go, they don't start with the voters and say, hey, how much do you want to pay, right? They, they're testing certain dollars. And so, they'll look to me to do a preliminary special tax allocation to say, well, it, to raise. Ten million dollars, the rate for single family would need to be X dollars per year. And so they'll test that, and then they'll test, you know, a couple of different dollar amounts typically. And once they're able to do that, that'll help you hone in, in terms of your, your project. So, say a hundred dollar a year rate gets you a million dollars a year in total revenue. And that supports a ten million dollar or twenty million dollar bond. And that gets you project proceeds of about seventeen, eighteen million. You know, it, those are the kinds of things we'll look at on the front end, so we do need to have some concept of those costs. But we can hone in a little bit more in terms of the actual project when we're ready to issue the bonds. So if we think now it's going to be roughly a fifteen million dollar project. And perhaps you get some grant money along the way, you have some donations, construction costs are less, you know, for whatever the case may be. We get to the time where we're issuing bonds and you understand now that you need a little bit less money than we originally anticipated. That's when you can issue, you can make a decision to issue less than the total authorized bond amount. So you can, it, so what we're setting with the election are maximums. We're, we're talking about a maximum rate that people will pay on an annual basis, that's their maximum special tax. Subject to whatever identified inflator that we put in place, and then we're talking about a maximum bond issue amount. You can also just structurally, if you have multiple projects that are ongoing. And you don't need the construction funds all at once. You can structure your bond issues where you actually have, within a single CFD, have multiple bond issues. Say you need, you know, six million dollars to do the first project at the first branch. And then maybe four years later, you need some additional. and then maybe four years later, you need um some additional funding for whatever your other project is. You can issue those bonds in multiples, in multiple series. Obviously, costs of issuance um play in, you don't, you know, you don't wanna separate those into really small increments um and and do a lot of different bond issues for little, small increments. Um but if there's a case where it makes sense to break that up, because you have multiple projects that are a couple of years apart, um you could potentially structure the, the debt that way.
And and another function of that bond would be the duration of the bond too, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you, you say you need X number of dollars, that would be, um you could have a dollar amount that you wanted, and then it might be a shorter term on the bond or a longer term, you, you have that variability too.
Right, I think, think about it like um, uh are you gonna get a thirty-year mortgage, or are you gonna get a fifteen-year mortgage? Okay, if you get a fifteen-year mortgage, your interest of cost is gonna be lower, but your total payment's gonna be higher. Whereas over thirty years, your payment is lower. So those are, those are two, you know, two things about just debt in general. The, the other reason why I brought up the fact of waiting until uh you uh get uh sealed bids for construction projects is it, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of the bad with the good. You know, when the economy's bad, uh it's actually a good time for public agencies to issue debt. And that's because there are, you know, construction companies that wanna keep their crews working. So they'll sharpen their pencil, and maybe you get an engineer's estimate that a project is gonna cost you. I'll just give you an example, we did a pro, we were funding a project for the county of Riverside for a sheriff's uh station. And the engineer's estimate was, I think it was thirty-eight million dollars, and when the bids came in, the low bidder was twenty-four million. So if we would have issued, you know, thirty-eight million in, in bonds for the project, we would have had way too much money. And uh one of the things about municipal bonds, that's unlike a, a mortgage, um we have the luxury, if we get a thirty-year mortgage, of prepaying anytime we want, but in municipal bonds, most of the time, there's a, a ten-year protection for bondholders, so the bonds can't be refinanced for ten years. So we wanna make sure that we get enough money to finish the project, but that we don't uh we don't borrow too much, because if the project comes in cheaper, then, you know, we're sitting on money that we can't use to prepay the loan.
And so when you, when you poll the public then, the taxpayers about what their appetite is for helping the library with this capital project, you're asking them not only how much they would wanna spend per year on their tax bill, but also how long they would wanna spend it, right? Some combination of that?
Well, we, we don't ask them that, because Sarah, what's usually what the life of a CFD is?
Thirty years, it's almost always a thirty-year bond, uh unless you're talking really, really big dollars. You know, fifty million, we might go with a forty, but um I'd say ninety-eight percent of the time, a CFD would have a thirty-year bond.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would, so that would be in your legal documents, and so we, we couldn't sell bonds that matured later than, you know, the authorization, or we couldn't sell more bonds than were authorized by the, by the district either.
For this project, we're probably talking fifteen or twenty million dollars, it's a little, but we have costed out, we do have cost estimates for everything.
Great, and and not, not that we wanna take advantage of anyone, but, you know, it, it is, it is a good time to be, you know, doing construction projects, not only because it's cheaper, it's also people are, you know, they're, they're able to uh employ people to get these projects done.
All right, other questions, comments?
Uh I just have one more, I guess, question, and
Okay.
This is, Sarah, you mentioned at one point uh that that a five to ten-million-dollar bond is the most efficient, and that banks are a little adverse to financing, you know, amounts like that right now because of all of the other things they're trying to do. Could you just drill down on that a little bit more, especially that five to ten-million-dollar bond being the most efficient?
Well, I think you just wouldn't wanna issue, you, you, we don't typically see um lower amounts issued. Um more is totally fine, um you know, but when you get down into, say, a one-million-dollar bond issuance, the amount you're paying in cost of issuance just doesn't make that very efficient. So you can, you can access capital through other means that are a lot cheaper than a municipal bond issuance. And so when you're talking about a lower uh total capital amount, that, that may make sense for that um that capital to be obtained in a, a little bit cheaper way. Um for a project of the size of, um you know, between fifteen and twenty million dollars, I think certainly um municipal bond issuance makes sense. Um right now, and and I think Mike can maybe speak to this um as well, the, the bond market is, is just a little crazy right now with the COVID situation. Um, you know, banks initially pulled way back, um we were not seeing issues price. Um then we were seeing sort of only rated insured issues price, and and we, I think Mike and I are both on the same page that we think this is likely to be a rated and insured bond issue. Um however, just, you know, we don't know what, well, we never know what the bond market's going to be six months from now, um or we would not have day jobs, but we, i- it's, it's very strange right now. Um it's very hard to predict. Um we are seeing more issues priced, we're seeing, I think, more, more land secured financing um uh come into the marketplace. Um so I don't know, Mike, if you have anything you wanna add there, but um it, I think the bond market right now at this moment is just um a, a little off-kilter with COVID like the rest of the world. And um I think we would expect it to come back to some sort of normal um at some point in the future, and this is far enough out um into next year that um I, I mean, I would assume that we would start to see things normalize again.
I had just one other thought, and that is that all of us on the board are, are a little worried about the uh Measure A uh that we have in place right now expires in two thousand twenty-five, and we'll continue to need that, that's for operating funds for us. So, you know, in your experience, and you know, it might be outside of your, your experience on this next question, but I mean, are, are there lots of other library projects, especially where there's a double line on your tax bill for what the library needs? Or is that make it, is it make it a little bit untenable to have a, a second issuance, if you will, when there's already one uh that regards the library?
Um I think it varies a lot by the community, honestly. Um but I want, when I looked, um and I don't remember now off the top of my head, but I wanna say you had a very high level of support for your parcel tax when that election was held, um more than seventy percent.
Yeah, we did. It was the highest in the country, actually, for that year. There were a hundred and fifty Measure As out there in the country, and we won by the highest uh voter approval, so.
Yeah, and I mean, that's fantastic. Um and I think, you know, it really just depends on the community. Um a- and I think that's part of the messaging that you do to the community is, is say, you know, it, this is really specifically for facilities. Um in the event that you would like to consider using this CFD basically as a replacement to that parcel tax that will be expiring, you would have that option too. What you could do is actually roll in both the facilities component and a services component, but you would have to make it very clear to people that this is replacing that other measure.
Okay, so this was gonna be my question, um and and you've sort of jumped ahead, so. Right, because you can use, you can use it for services and for construction. Is there a way that we can structure this? Because I'm very nervous about putting two things up for a vote in close proximity um in a short span of time, especially if it's possible that stretching it over a longer period will give us greater financial security. So what would be the architecture of doing something that funded, let's say, fifteen million dollars in capital construction costs and replaced and augmented what our parcel tax does? What would that look like?
Um so, so yeah, absolutely, it's, it's absolutely possible um to do that. And so we would basically just, um we would create a s- a special tax rate that captures the portion of the um the portion of the special tax that would be dedicated to paying back the debt incurred for your facilities. And then we would calculate what we call a services special tax, which would be the replacement to the parcel tax. So we would have both line items, and when it comes to the vote, people would be, ba- basically, those two numbers would just get added together. Mechanically, there's some other differences. Um you could have the ability to prepay the bonded portion, meaning if somebody no longer wanted to have that debt on their property tax bill, they could prepay that bonded portion. Um there are some things to think about with the services in terms of, of the term. So a, a CFD where you have only facilities, you would be levying that special tax only for the term of your bonds. You would only be collecting that for the roughly thirty-year period that you have debt outstanding. Now, when you have a services component layered on, you would have to specify, will levy for the thirty years on the facilities special tax component, but after that time period expires, will only level levy for the uh services component. So your special tax after year thirty will drop from, you know, say, a hundred dollars to seventy-five dollars, or, you know, depending on how that math worked out, fifty dollars, whatever that was. The other option you have is what we call a transitional CFD. And that means that you take some portion of that maximum special tax that you had identified for the first thirty years to pay for facilities and to pay for that debt. You transition a portion of that, so in the first thirty years, your services special tax amount is, say, fifty dollars a parcel. And you get to the end of the, uh and your total special tax is a hundred dollars. You get to the end of your debt, and you say, gosh, we really need to put some money away for some capital replacement. Um you know, now our facility is thirty years old, we need to maybe make some repairs or what have you. Then you can transition, so after that thirty-year mark, instead of being a hundred-dollar total, you're going to transition it to, say, seventy-five dollars. So it's typically done where you're paying less than you were when you were paying for the debt repayment, but you're paying more than you would have just for those services along the way.
Right, so my question, I guess, is this, in your opinion, given that we need to fund both a serious capital project projects and ongoing services that will continue to need to be funded, right? In perpetuity, like that's gonna continue to need to be a, a revenue stream, what's the most what's the most secure way to do that, right? Where the library doesn't find itself in a situation where it runs out of money, you know what I mean? Like, because if we're renewing a flat parcel tax every ten years, there's always the potential that that doesn't pass.
Right.
Given that it's basically a third of our revenue stream at this point, even if it were to be augmented, like that just, in, in some way, it just dials the risk up, right? Because then every ten years, we have to hope that people are still on board.
Right, and and I think it really goes into the messaging, um you know, it, it's do you ask twice for smaller dollar amounts? Or do you ask once for a larger dollar amount and make sure that people understand that it's a replacement of their existing parcel tax? And, you know, I don't, I don't know, if you got that, that high level of support on the parcel tax the last time you had the election, um uh you know, I don't know what has changed in the community over the last few years, if anything, if you have, if you still have a good sense that you know, people really support the library district, and this is something that's very important to them. Um and and how good the communication is with the public, um you know, maybe the political consulting folks could weigh in, but y- you really have to make that message clear. If you're trying to do one measure that then is a replacement for another, you have to make that message really, really clear to the public that that's what's happening. And you're asking for something on a different term now than you maybe would have on just your parcel tax.
No, I, I, I understand that, and I, I don't think that's my question. My question is, assuming fantastic messaging, right? Assuming community support, assuming that we do a really good job of communicating exactly what we're trying to do, and we have a community that backs it, which approach is more fiscally secure? It seems like the longer duration would be inherently safer.
Yes, the CFD would give you a longer duration. Um you could ask for a parcel tax with a longer duration, but this would give you a longer, a longer duration kind of from the get-go.
Okay.
Plus, it would kind of clean everything up and have one line item on the tax bill and everything else. Is there a way also to, I'm sorry, Katie, to jump in here, but why, I haven't, I'm, I'm front of my mind. You know, that uh assessment actually grows a little bit too, and are we able to sort of time value the growth of that into our projections for what we need as well?
Um it, what assessment grows a little?
The special tax, it grows a little bit, or the prop, the um Measure A tax that we have.
Gotcha, so it has, has some sort of an inflator built into the rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, we would be able to capture an inflator on the services.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
I would, my only other, my only other comment was the thing that's changed between now and the last time is a twenty-five percent unemployment rate across the country, so this was really got me worried about things.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, other, other than, I mean, the COVID situation obviously has thrown a lot of unknowns in all of our, all of our lapses. But um uh you know, if you have a general sense of the, if the, you know, community is, is still the same, um and and your library is closed right now, I assume, to the public?
The buildings are closed.
Okay, are you doing um like curbside pickup of materials and?
That will be starting soon. Um we're doing extensive online services and.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, my local library just started the um, the curbside pickup, and I'm very excited, so.
Yeah, we're rolling it out in the next two days, actually.
Yeah, nice.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I think, you know, given the, given the sort of composition of Altadena, it's, you know, hugely residential, I imagine would be a very good candidate for a highly rated situation, right? Like, it's, it's not, you know, a bunch of, bunch of fields. Am I correct that our, our next process is to engage a political consultant and basically just do a lot of testing on what various architecture and dollar amounts might work for people?
So first, we have to figure out what those dollar amounts might be. So um so that would be the preliminary work, would be that um rate modeling. Um and that's something that I would do. So first, we would do the rate modeling, and then we would get to the point that we're doing the political consulting. Um but just to keep in mind, if the agenda deadline is June twelfth um for the June twenty-second board meeting, um we have to have those rates locked in on the written method of apportionment at that intent meeting. So we have to know what rate and what structure the CFD is taking, whether it's facilities only, facilities plus services, um the transitional concept that I talked about, where the facilities amount transitions to also pay for services after the debt's repaid. We have to know all of that and have that document one hundred percent locked in by June twelfth.
Okay. Got it. Well, obviously, there are a lot of things we are gonna talk about, and I think we're gonna get into that when we get closer to an action item. But I also wanna be aware of the fact that it's almost seven-thirty, so if there are other questions that anybody else has for Sarah or Mike, let's go ahead and cover those now, and then we can move into some more general discussion later in the agenda.
Could I just ask um Sarah, if you would either, like, email us this presentation, or at a minimum, I would love to go back and look at the slide that had sort of the beginning to the end process?
Mm-hmm.
That might, by, before I understood a lot of what you said afterwards. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I saw a typo as I was going along, so I'm gonna fix that, and then I'll email it over to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and I, I have, just for my own information, so I understand the bigger picture, I do believe I heard you say, or maybe it was Mike, the one thing it could not be based on was property value, is that what you said? Can you just say, why is that, just so I understand?
Um because the only tax that can be based on property value is your ad verum, your general property tax.
Okay, so that's just a general about.
Yeah, it's just part of Article thirteen A of the Constitution.
Okay.
But in a weird way, it kind of can, right? Because we can set different rates for multifamily versus residential versus commercial, so it doesn't have to just be like a flat parcel tax per parcel, everybody, and we can build in a little bit more sensitivity there.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and we would typically see, say, multifamily paying something like seventy-five, eighty percent of the rate that is paid by single family. Um, and perhaps commercial paying something like um for you know, typically, it's, you know, for residences per acre is kind of the translation between commercial and residential. So um, I don't know if you have any large um commercial properties in Altadena. It doesn't, I'm not thinking that's likely, but um, you know, so we would typically charge them kind of almost on an equivalent dwelling unit sort of basis. We would look at the rates that way.
Right.
Um, so the commercial would maybe pay four times as much. But if you don't have very much commercial, the amount they pay won't probably move the dial very much in terms of the overall um rates if you're, if you're ninety something percent residential, um, right? Which I think is the case.
That's accurate, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Jason, Gwen, anything from you guys for either Sarah or Mike?
No, Terry hit on a few of the questions that I was generally thinking about.
Okay. Gwen, anything from you? Oh, you have to unmute yourself, Gwen. There we go.
Okay, um, I don't think so. The BUN issue. And with COVID, oh my goodness, it's just so much to think about, but maybe indeed, this might be a good time to do that. But you're saying that we need to have by a certain point, a survey of the community? Is that a public hearing?
But I think you'd be looking at both. The the legal process includes a public hearing. Um, but I think you would, you would, um, my understanding is that you would prefer to go out to poll the community to understand whether the measure was likely to pass before you um incur the cost of an election.
Correct.
Right.
But the good news is, and and let me make sure I I am correct on this point, the good news is, is that we are not tied to the November election for a CFD. So we could look at a special election, we could look at March for a primary, like there are other options. I mean, it does not have to be on the November ballot.
Absolutely. Yeah, that is absolutely correct. And I mean, if it feels like, I mean, between now and March twelfth is four weeks. That that's a very quick timeframe to, you know, kind of consider those costs, do some modeling, do some polling, finalize the rate and method of apportionment that gets you to that November election. That is really, really quick. Um, and so, yeah, absolutely. We can choose any other election day. So if you push into, say, March, it does not have to be on the March election. Um, and I can, we work with election consultants that do those mailed valid elections. You can either have the county do that for you or you can use a consultant for that. And um frankly, I think it comes down to cost. Um, I don't know what LA County would charge you to do a special mailed ballot election when you're not consolidating with other measures. The benefit of consolidating is you're on the ballot with everybody else. Therefore, you're sharing the cost with everyone else of the.
And the other benefit is that voter turnout will be improved, right? So in in the, in the
Theoretically.
Improved participation. Well, I I am sure that being on a presidential ballot would have improved voter turnout versus a mail ballot election, like.
Right.
So, you know, the more transparency and kind of participation we can have, you know, the more democratic the process is.
Yeah, but you do have access to other mailed ballot election dates.
Right, right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Sarah, Mike, I want to thank you so much for your um very generous time tonight. Um, again, my apologies that this went so long, but um we are very grateful for all of your expertise and all the information you shared with us. So thank you so much.
Yeah, it was nicely done. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thanks. Thank you.
You. Do you want us to stay on if there are any other questions as you move through the agenda to some of these items?
You know, it's, it's gonna be a minute. So I think unless there's any objection from from other trustees, I think that we're okay. If we have additional questions, um, we can compile those and send them to you, but I I don't want to ask for any more of your time than we've already asked for at this point.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
I just wanted to say, we're used to dealing with the, you know, public agency. So we know that closed session and other things on the agenda can take time. So it's not a surprise to us and we can just work with it, so.
And normally, we would have been traveling to your meeting. So, you know, we're, we're doing this at home and makes it a little easier, so.
There you go. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it. Okay, um. So, you know, obviously, we've got a couple of items later on in the agenda um under new business. When we come to our review of ARG and when we look at hiring a political consultant, my inclination is that um sort of the next part of this discussion, which is basically what do we want to do in terms of some public financing to pay for capital and other projects? Um, I think is best saved there as as part of those action items. Um, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right. So at that point, we will move on to item four, consent calendar. Um, as is usually our practice, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go ahead and approve the consent calendar and a second. And then we can pull out any uh particular items we'd like to discuss at that time. So if I could get a motion, please?
The consent calendar.
Okay, Terry and a second from Betsy. Perfect. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor for any commentary. For anybody following along, this is pages seven through twenty, including of all of our departmental monthly reports. So we'll do any comments or questions at this time um on those sections.
Well, I'll, I'll start um just because I, you know, I, I think all of us like to see what's happening from the different department reports. And Nikki, please tell your staff who are maybe listening to this that uh they look better and better each month. So I really appreciate that. Uh, I had the opportunity to get on uh the report from Stella regarding the the chat service that you had there for a while and that uh that request for a question about the Hollywood sign was me. I called, I got ahold of Helen, and I was really, really pleased with the, this is my point, I guess. I was pleased with the interaction. She was excited to get my question. She figured out it was me, even though it was online, it was on behalf of my brother. And she got right on it. And she figured this thing out for us and sent me this stuff. I go, wow, that's impressive. I see now from Stella's uh comment here that it was, you know, a little, I guess, short-lived and that wasn't that well-used. But I can tell you, the time it was used was really good. So I just want to pass that on. And then also on Jesse Lopez, he
Oh, yeah.
listed a bunch of skills and uh, you know, programs that he'd done uh mostly on YouTube. And I tuned into one of them and it was really terrific. It was about library leadership and so on. And then finally, if you could pass on to Mark, who did the made the fourth be with you uh video, for those of you that haven't seen it, it was really entertaining. It was really good. It taught me a couple of things about Star Wars that I didn't know. So those are my comments about the reports for the, from the um staff.
Great, thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, this is Jason. Um, yeah, I think just to kind of follow up on on Terry's piece, just looking at the list of the the diversity of those, the online trainings that the staff participated in is is pretty impressive. I think um, I think I'm, the one, one that stood out to me that I'm planning on checking out, and I think it's the one Terry was mentioning, was the Library two point O, How Library Leaders Are Failing Librarianship. Um, I think, you know, just seeing that staffer checking out that kind of thing, just to, you know, I would assume it's so we can kind of keep a check on ourselves and make sure we're not, you know, falling victim to any pitfalls. That's just really good to see. Um, you know, some of the other ones that stood out to me is is uh, there was one called Beyond Routine Library Service to Immigrants. I think considering all the work that we just did uh in our strategic plan and being very intentional about uh our future outreach to members of the community that maybe we haven't done as good of a job as we can do. Um, you know, is is a big piece of that. So it's good to see. Um, and then I think especially important right now, uh, the other one that stood out to me was identifying local organizations for partnerships. And this was specific to, you know, having a partner around uh mental health issues. Um, so yeah, it's really, just really impressive, just looking at the diversity of what staff have taken initiative to to learn about during this time.
Other comments or questions?
Betsy, I I have, I have a few that I'll, in the interest of time, just contact staff people directly with a few questions and in comments. I did want to specifically shout out to Lori. I don't know if any of you went and looked at the digital archive that she worked on, where they were digitizing a lot of our old newspaper clippings and brochures and just sort of the history of our own library. I mean, that's, I'm sure I'm not the only nerdy person in Altadena that loves that kind of stuff. So I'm, I'm so happy she had the time to do it. Um, I'm, I would hope if it hasn't already happened that uh, the the historical society could make, you know, make sure they know about that. And also, I would love to see it really highlighted somewhere on our website. Because um, like I say, there are other nerds like me out there. The rest of my comments I'll do privately, just to save time.
I would just like to say that they, they're doing an incredible job with, in spite of COVID. Um, and I just am so impressed with all of the interesting webinars that they've listed here and um, all of the work that they're doing. Um, even the groundwork that they're laying for Imagine Your Story uh for uh the summer reading. I I just think it's incredible. Um, and we have such a, an large group of creative people that are just doing phenomenal things. Thank you.
I will certainly echo all of those sentiments and um just pass on my appreciation uh to all the staff and the supervising staff members, the management team, who I know are doing a really good job of figuring out what our phase reopening looks like, and that is not an easy task. And so I really, I think that for all of their creative thinking, um, as we figure out how to navigate a very unusual situation.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'd like to, I think at this point, hand it over to let's see, wait, I want to make sure we do the vote at the right time. This will be part of it. So at this point, I'll hand it over to Miling for her uh presentation on Children's Family Services. And then after that, we'll go ahead and do the vote to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. How are you? Let me um get my presentation up.
Summer reading, okay.
Yeah, so we, um, I did share a little bit in my board package about summer reading. There's some, I'm gonna um cover a little bit more information here. Uh, it's basically, it's gonna be a short overview of our plan. Um, so let me know as we go through if you have any questions or anything like that. So, let's start it. Our theme is Imagine Your Story. And this is the theme from the Collaborative Summer Library Program. Um, so there are various libraries throughout the uh country that are using this theme. Um, and all of the art that you'll see throughout and that we'll use is by Luwen Fan, who is actually a local artist and illustrator. With local, like California-ish. So the date that the program is gonna run is June sixth through August first. Uh, and we will start early online registration um by next week or possibly earlier. So um, the format will be that we will have adult, teen, and children's kits available, so physical kits. They will be in English and Spanish for pickup during the program dates. We're still nailing out how exactly to do that pickup. Um, it may just be along with um the curbside pickups, or it might be um some separate hours. But the kits will include instructions for signing up online, a paper copy of each SRP program, calendar of the, of events, uh, one to three themed books, and then any other materials that might be used during our summer reading programs. Patients will be able to track their participation online or on paper. And those that participate online will earn one raffle ticket for registration and then an additional raffle ticket when they complete the program. Um, and the prizes for those raffle tickets will vary by age group. So the children's program is separated into five different badges. Um, if you're familiar with Bean Stack, they're really into badges. So essentially, um, all of these five badges will have um five suggested activities under each one. And then people have to complete at least two activities per badge to complete that badge. So it's essentially, they have to do ten activities um to complete the program. So the badges that I've chosen are adventurer, dreamer, explorer, inventor, and wanderer. And the suggested activities under each of those are loosely tied to um the name of the badge. So example activities for pre-K are to attend a virtual event put on by a Growing Together Pasadena partner. Um, turning on some music and having a dance party. You can use our hoopla service to find music that will fit any mood. Pick a letter and eat three foods that start with that letter. And then um for all of the badges, one of the suggested activities is read a book together. And then for K through fifth, it's the same sort of setup. It'll be the same badges, just different um I suggested activities. And so some of those suggested activities are to virtually attend a library program, check our events calendar to see what's coming up. Write a letter to a friend or family member and mail it through the US Postal Service. Create a craft project using the materials provided in your summer reading packet. And again, all of the badges include the act, suggested activity of read a book. So our teen program is set up um with more of a focus on activism and civic engagement. So all of the participants will receive in their kit a copy of Take the Mic, Fictional Stories of Everyday Resistance, which is edited edited by Bethany C. Morrow. And there will be book clubs held throughout the summer to discuss the different themes in the book. And then um Isabel has come up with some suggested activities to promote civic engagement. So again, she'll have a list of, I think, about fifteen or twenty suggested activities, and they have to complete ten to complete the program. Um, so that some of those activities that she has are um pre-registering to vote, making activist window signs, and writing letters to elected representatives. And I believe she's going to include some um postcards in her, her kits as well that they can send to those elected representatives. And then our adult program is separated into three sort of categories, athlete, dreamer, and fixer. And each of those categories includes a selected book, a recommended reading list, uh suggested activities, and at least one themed program. So when people um come to pick up their kits or when they register online, they have to choose which book they will receive. Um, but they'll be able to participate in activities and programs across all of the categories. And they, again, have to just complete ten of the suggested activities to complete the program. So some of those suggested activities for athlete, we have um, nope, not for athlete. Yes. Hold on. Okay, for dreamer, there's um meditation and walking, and nine-minute strength workout link, um, and a creeping's fix, how to make potato salad. Um, they have, maybe these are all from dreamer. But some of these are, um, how to do lucid dreaming, listen to the MLK uh speech, I have a dream, start a dream journal, one hundred and one ways to use WD forty, that's definitely in the fixer. Um, how to use natural dye and um attend a shred day or electronic waste drop-off day. So the raffle prizes for all of our programs, um, as I said before, they, participants will earn a raffle ticket when they the participants will earn a raffle ticket when they register and when they complete the program. And then we'll actually draw those winners after the end of SRP on August 1st. So the pre-K participant raffle prize is a $100 gift card to KidSpace to be used when they reopen. And the K through fifth participant raffle prize is a $100 gift card to Roman's Bookstore. I will say for the pre-K, I do have some additional $25 gift cards that we're gonna use as prizes, and we might use as like second, third place winners. And then teen and adult participant raffle prizes are coming soon. So as I said with the kits, there will be some books that will be included. And I think across all age groups, there will be at least one title that is consistent. So for my pre-K group, I chose My Day With You, which is kind of a small child walking through their day with their caregiver. So different routines and things that they would recognize. K through seconds are going to receive All My Friends or Planets: The Story of Pluto, and The Greatest Adventure by Tony Pietra. And then third through fifth will receive Salsa Stories by Lulu Delclaire, and Writing Freedom by Pan Wurz Ryan. Munoz Ryan. Teen and adult book prizes, the teens are, as I said before, can receive Take the Mic. And then adults, depending on which kind of book they would rather receive. For the dreamer, they've chosen The Archive of Alternative Endings by Lindsay Dragner. The fixer badge is the Geometry of Hand Sewing: A Romance in Stitches and Embroidery. And then the athlete badge is Bodyweight Training Anatomy. So in our children's kits, some of the extra supplies to participate in our programming, we've got origami paper, construction paper, tag paper, scissors, glue stick, paint set, paintbrush, tiny canvas, air-dry clay, Q-tips, and a deck of playing cards will be used during one of our performers' doing a magic how-to program. So my assumption, or not assumption, but I was thinking that there may be a chance that some of the kids who are picking these up don't have like scissors or a glue stick at home. I know that our scissors go missing every day. So this just has everything included. And it'll have a list of everything and what program it goes along with. And in addition to all of those things, they'll also get their tiny little owl, if you can see it. And this is, I think there was one given out a couple years ago for summer reading prize. But this guy has a different color shirt, so you can, somebody can start collecting owls. And that was gonna be the completion prize for children's summer reading. And now it is the everybody prize for children's summer reading. Well, children's, but even if they don't complete, if they just pick up the packet, they receive it. So our programming schedule, this is for children's. On Monday, we're going to do postings of a Lego challenge of the week. So some of those might be like build a boat to take you on adventures around the world, build binoculars to spy the creatures and objects in your surrounding, create an element of your favorite story, and the final week will be flex your skills. We'll invite people to submit photos if they feel comfortable with that, and we'll share those. Tuesdays, I have scheduled some upside performers. And they're scheduled about every other Tuesday, and that'll be held at 4:00 PM. Traditionally, I believe that programs for summer reading have been held at 2:00 at Main and 4:00 at Bob Lucas. So I just tried to keep a similar schedule, so that 4:00 on Tuesdays. Wednesdays will release two pre-made, staff-created programs. Thursdays will have a regular writing workshop for grades third through fifth that kids can just drop in. And then Fridays, we will have interactive programming. So we will have different types of trivia using a product called Kahoot. And that will have Harry Potter trivia, Warriors series trivia, Dogman. And then I'll also have a couple rounds of bingo. And our final Friday will have a talent show viewing. So in the week or two before, we will invite patrons to send in some videos of their talents and compile those into a single video and kind of show that on that final Friday. Some special children's programs on June 6th for our kickoff. I'm having a magic show by Christopher T. Magician. And then monthly book clubs will take place on June 9th. Will be the Salsa Stories Book Club, and June 27th will be the Writing Freedom Book Club. And then our closing program on August 1st will be a magic and comedy performance by Zini Zoe. Some of the staff-created, pre-recorded programs for, these are all children's, but I know that adult and teen are creating a few as well. Some virtual story times, various art projects, origami foldings and bookmarks, how to write a haiku, meditation, DIY combing jars, some STEM experiments like bubble snakes and volcanoes, paper beads and paper birds, and a digital escape room, and more. And so there is, there will be more information coming soon. Chloe will have eBasts webpage, she's working on the web. Actually, she already has a beginning webpage up now, just saying that it's coming. Social media campaigns, digital ads, flyers, all the things, she is working on those. And yes, this is the webpage where all of the updates will be found. That is all my things. Do any of you have any questions?
What's the digital escape room?
The digital escape room? So there, there've been a few going around. Most people use like Google Forms or something like that. So it's sort of like a choose-your-own-adventure. It'll start with a premise and then say, give you like four or five options, which way do you want to go? What do you want to try? You click that option, it'll take you to a different page. So it's like a text-based escape room, kind of.
Cool.
Yeah.
Well, while I have the floor, I'm just wondering what luck, if any, you've had in communicating all this stuff to the local schools. Because I know, you know, you know that they're communicating with parents incessantly by email.
Right. I think once, probably this week, once we know the date of when people can start doing their preregistration, we're going to contact all those schools with the information about it, and especially pushing and letting people know that they can come by the library to pick up the materials.
This looks awesome. I am super excited about summer reading. This is really cool. And I just, hats off to figuring out such a, just like an interesting and creative approach, especially when we can't do programming in person the way that we would like to. And I love the art, whoever the illustrator is, right? You said it was somebody.
Oh yeah, Luwen Pham.
Awesome.
Yeah, she's an awesome artist. She's done a lot of, she actually did, if you watched my Princess in Black readings, she was the illustrator for those.
Did watch that. Yeah, this is, this is super cool.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, good work. I like the haiku, how to write a haiku, those are really hard to do, actually.
Yes. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be an adventure. And a lot of these, or probably almost all of them, will invite people if they want to send us their final products. And we can share some of those if they feel comfortable with that.
Wow, that's great.
Incredible job, very creative. Thank you so very much. Wonderful, wonderful ideas.
This was really, really nice. It was really nice to hear some, like, do you know what I mean? Like, we have a lot, thank you. We have a lot on the agenda. It's a tough time. And so just like, thank you. That was like a summer reading sunshine.
Yay. That's, that's our goal with summer reading.
Perfect. Okay, anything else for Miling, guys, before we proceed to a vote on the consent calendar? Okay, perfect. Miling, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Great job.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, so at this point, having had a motion and a second, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a vote to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, please go ahead and signify. Gwen, you gotta turn your camera back on. Signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Well, what happened?
You lost your visual, Gwen.
Okay.
There we go, perfect.
All right.
All right, fantastic. So that brings us to our report section. So we've got reports in the packet from the foundation and from the friends that appear on pages 21 through 23. We're not gonna, I don't believe we have anybody to report to us in person. So I'm not gonna go into too much detail there other than to, once again, continue to thank both of our support groups for their ongoing efforts and to salute both of them for finding virtual solutions to continuing their operations. I look forward to knowing what our virtual pitch party will look like in July. That sounds fun. All right, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Nikki for the direct report, which appears on page 24, starts on page 24 of your package.
All right, good evening. I know we're well into our fourth hour, so I'm gonna be really brief. So building off of the reopening the library during the pandemic, we all returned today. Well, not every single one of us, but we do have some staff that are working staggered schedules. So a lot of the full-time staff are either working Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then working home two days, or Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday with two days at home. But there was quite a few of us, and everybody seems pretty happy to be back. I know I am. We have opened the book drops, and we got that on the website today that we're taking returns back. So spread the word if people want to start returning them. We're doing, our East team put together a process for that, where the books will be quarantined for 72 hours before they're being checked in and handled. But again, we're extending due dates, and as you all know, we don't have late fees. So we're just doing that as a precaution. As I briefly mentioned earlier, we met this morning after the management team meeting to talk about curbside pickup and develop a robust process for that. We're talking to the staff today, and the plan is to launch that on Wednesday. Basically, what'll happen is the community will call us. We will verify that the items are here and available on the shelf. They'll set up a pickup time the next day and tell us what they're gonna be driving. So it'll be completely contactless. You know, a staff person will see them come up, give them their bag, they'll take their bag. They can even drop off returns at the same time. And well, that's how people will have access to materials, at least for the foreseeable future. We do have an eBlast that will go out tomorrow morning with more information about the whole process and informing the community on how they can do that. Let's see, as Miling referred to in her presentation, we have been very busy on our YouTube page. I believe Chloe told me we've posted over 100 videos in the last two months since we've been home. I know I get a kick out of watching them, and it is for all different ages. Most recently, I've been watching Charles Fudd's videos. He's one of the authors of Wild LA, our One Book, One City Read Adina Initiative. And he's definitely an interesting character. His most recent one, I think, was on sea turtles, so I encourage everyone to take a look. We're very focused right now on preparing for and launching summer reading program, as you guys just heard all about. So that's what our marketing focus has been right now, which we'll be pushing from this point on. And also, another focus on an overhaul of all of the website to make sure that all the pages are accurate and timely as things have changed. We're not open to the public, but we do have staff, our services are changing. We're looking, I had a conversation today with the Passport Services employees to see if they think it's feasible to start offering passport services again. And so again, this is like a ever-moving target, is kind of how it feels. But we want to make sure that we're getting the information out to the community in a timely way. Again, I think that's about all. You know, I did outline a lot of other things in my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have at this time.
Okay, floor's open for questions.
Nikki, this is Jason. I mean, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but when we go live with the curbside, will there be a little news blurb on that on the landing page for the website, too?
Definitely. We're gonna promote it on social media, the website. And as we discussed earlier, do a marketing push. We'll get some signage put up. That, and not only are we gonna have curbside, but we're designating us a part of the parking lot that'll be to let people know they can pull up and use Wi-Fi if they need to as well. So yes, we are definitely gonna push it all over the place.
Great. There will also be a press release.
Thank you, Chloe.
The voice of God.
It does kind of feel that way.
It does. I like it.
Nikki, you mentioned phone as the way people would set up picking things up. Is it only phone, or can you, is there a way to do it by email?
I, we talked this out today in the meeting that we had. And I feel like automated might be confusing in terms of the fact that like, we want to have a pretty quick turnaround for people. So I know Pasadena, Betsy, you forwarded me the email about something you were gonna do curbside pickup on. It's a three-day turnaround for them. And I have to kind of assume that that's because they're pulling items from all of their sites. Whereas like, we, you know, we do have items over at Bob Lucas, and we're gonna incorporate that in. But to be honest with you, we want it to feel like a more personalized service as well. So we could, we may expand it, but for right now, we're gonna start it by phone call. And having the staff verify that the items are actually here and available for them to come get.
So it's like, like when I call that number, is somebody gonna be on a cell phone and like walking back into the stacks to find my book? Is that, is that what you mean, or?
We do have some wireless phones. The talk today was to, you know, put the person on hold after they identified the item, go double-check that they're all there. It's definitely a work in progress. I personally had a different philosophy, but the staff one. So again, you know, and we did say that it would be like a 10-item limit. And there are many vendors that are jumping on this and offering demos of automated services that they've created. I don't know that we can justify spending $3,000 to $5,000 on something that, when we have no idea what the longevity of this service looks like. So as of right now, it's gonna be a phone call. And to be honest, I really, we're pushing that mainly because we want to talk to patrons and get them used to, you know, one-on-one service with us again.
It's almost like concierge library service.
Yeah, that is a word I've used a couple times.
Yeah. Great. Other questions for Nikki? When you're muted, we can, can you unmute?
I keep, how far in advance then would you need to, if you wanted to pick up a book? Do we need to call in?
Yeah, we're saying just a day in advance.
A day in advance, okay.
Because the plan is we're gonna have pickup from 11:00 to 1:00, or 3:30 to 5:30. And even that could end up being a moving thing. If we find that a lot of people are asking for evening hours, we might shift staff schedules to be here later at night. Again, we're just gonna take the feedback as we get it and see what makes the most sense. But we'll have people designate a 15-minute time slot that they're gonna come and pick up. So we don't have like 20 cars at once picking up. They'll identify when they want to come, and we'll say what car, type of car will you be driving? So we'll have a pretty good idea of who's coming.
And will that be through the parking lot, or is that, okay?
Yep. Designated spots.
All right. Perfect.
Yep.
Can't wait to try it.
Yeah.
I'm out of fiction, man, it's time.
Yeah, I told Betsy, she was really wanting a book. I'm like, I do know people that work at the library.
Tired of middle school fiction. I need something a little more mature.
Oh my goodness.
All right. Thank you so much, Nikki. Anything else, guys, before we move on to our financial reports for Nikki?
No. No.
That's good.
All right, so let's move on to our financial reports. Those appear on pages twenty-seven through forty of your board package. Nikki, are you doing those, or do we have Nicole with us?
Nicole is here. Are you jumping on, Nicole? I think I heard her. Do you wanna see the financial reports, or you can just refer to your packets?
I think we can refer to our package.
Yeah, and so, Nicole, are you presenting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hang on one second, Nicole. Can you move closer to a mic, because it's pretty hard to hear you?
Yes, of course. Okay, so I'm on page twenty-seven.
Great.
Financials for this month, but these are actually the financials for March of twenty-twenty. And, and you'll see that currently, these figures should show at a, at about seventy-five percent of our budget. But our numbers for this year obviously are a little skewed, having been closed and having not spent as much as we anticipated at the beginning of the fiscal year. So if you look through the budget versus actual, the figure should be near seventy-five percent, but obviously, we might be underspent in a few categories. Revenue for this month also, obviously, a little less because we did close halfway through the month, and so passport services was closed, we weren't able to find some keys or anything like that, we were a little low on revenue. Here's this month, we did spend a little on capital expenditures, a new ladder on the roof, and then some new cabinetry in the facility downstairs. And those are the highlights. If you have any questions about any of the financials, I'm happy to answer them.
It looks like, and I didn't do a full average, but it looks like based on these March budget versus actual, that as of the end of March, where I would guess something like overall sixty, sixty-five percent, does that?
Yeah, you're right.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was the total income? Can you hear me? Or am I muted?
Well, no, I can hear you. And total revenue for the month of March was about eighteen thousand dollars.
That's on page?
It's in the, the revenue highlights on page twenty-seven. It's also on the profit and loss.
So yeah, that's the first page of the report. There's a revenue highlight section.
Yeah, and then on the profit and loss sheet, which is page thirty-eight of the packet, about halfway down the page, it shows total income, and then it shows that seventeen thousand eight hundred seventy-one and forty-eight cents.
I have a question on page thirty-six. And I don't know, I don't know if this is a confidential personnel thing that may not be able to be discussed in an open meeting, but I'm curious about line fifty-two seventy, the workers' comp cost for this year so far. Is there anything that can be said about why that's so much higher than last year?
And the, the, the answer I can give is that there were more claims without going into too much detail.
Other questions for Nicole on the financials? Gwen, did we address your question, or did you need another minute or two?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Nicole. I'm sure we'll be back to you shortly for our overview of the proposed budget, but for now, let's move into our committee reports. So we'll start with the Budget Committee. That report appears on pages forty-one through forty-two of your package. And Terry, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, this report, we had our budget meeting the day before our deadline for the packet, and so there are a couple of errors in here that we'll pick up when we actually review the budget later on, the one, the draft budget that we have. But we had, it was, it was well organized. Thanks, Nikki and Nicole, for doing such a good job having all the materials ready, and then we had a couple of folks, Ian Berg and Cindy Byram from AID Bailey, who are, so are accounting consultants that were there to answer questions and so on. And the, the quick take on this is that they, we were presented a balanced budget and that we are going to spend, I'm gonna alter the number here, do the edit. We're gonna spend three million nine hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred dollars, and we're also gonna get that much in income, so it was sort of perfectly balanced. One big item to revenues was an increase to overall revenues that would be a transfer from our reserves into our operating fund. This report's a hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred dollars, but that's inaccurate. It actually should be two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars. And we decided to raise that during the budget meeting because there's gonna be some extra costs for consultants and so on. So you can see the rest of this. I'm not gonna belabor this because in the interest of time, we'll talk a little bit more about it when we do the presentation of the budget itself. But we had expected rises at UAC in salaries and wages, five percent overall, but only two percent for hourly staff members, and a lot of the disparity is because we've got Nikki on our payroll now as a salary employee. And before, we, with our interim director, Cindy, we had her on an hourly wage. And then professional services, lower, because we don't expect to use as much legal expense. The information technology budget will increase by fourteen thousand dollars. So there's a variety of highlights there. None of them really major that I'll let you go over and kind of cut to the chase here. But I think we'll talk about all these things a little bit more detail when we get to the budget itself. Do you have any questions about this report? And thanks so much, Katie, for helping out. Katie adds, added some language at the end that has to do, I should mention this, with the ten-year forecast that shows that we're going to be dipping into our reserves, which we need by law to maintain one half a year of operating costs by twenty-twenty-five or so, based on the current burn rate that we have for our spending. So that, of course, is something that we're gonna be talking a lot more about. I didn't see it coming that early, to tell you the truth, but Cindy Byram furnished this and showed it to us at the meeting. It's not included in the packet, right, Katie?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Because it's just something that we don't want to have in the public domain right now, because there's so much analysis that needs to be done on it.
Well, it's in the public domain. I mean, it's in the budget.
Yeah, that's true.
But what our feeling was, is we didn't have any particularly helpful next steps to present to you. So we thought, let's, let's hold off and do a little bit more modeling and figure out what sort of dials we can turn and how that impacts various, various parts of our, you know, of our revenue shortfall versus our expenses versus our public funding versus debt. Like, there are a lot of moving parts in this, and I think, you know, the feeling from the Budget Committee was that basically, we just need a little more time to take a deeper dive into that and figure out what some reasonable next steps look like. The good news is, I think, you know, we are, we are solvent, we are good, we are okay for the next couple of years. We have a little bit of space, and I, you know, would encourage us to like, take that time to really take a deep breath and figure out what makes sense to ensure the long-term financial stability of the district. I, I think, having learned some of the things that we learned during our presentation earlier this evening about what potential timelines might exist in terms of financing, it gives us a little bit more breathing space than I think we had perhaps anticipated on some of those fronts. So I think basically, good news and forewarned is forearmed, right? Like, we have the time to make some decisions, but we need to start forecasting what those are gonna look like. Any other questions for Terry? At this point, obviously, like you said, we'll get back into this when we get to the proposed budget. But I think these are the highlights. I, I will say, as, as usual, we went through line item by line item with Nicole and with Nikki and with Ian and Cindy, and, you know, really kind of dug into what was where and why it was the way it was. So it was an exhaustive meeting. Betsy, please.
I guess I, yeah, I was gonna just say, never mind, but I guess I do have two quick, I hope, quick questions. And maybe, I don't know, maybe Nikki needs to answer these. About, on the line item, on the highlights on forty-one, about library materials and about insurance fees, I'm just wondering, why is there a large drop in cost of processing?
Oh, yeah, that's a.
Yeah. So what we've done is we've, what's the word, incorporated processing into the material cost itself. Not a separate line item in the budget.
So when you buy a book, the processing is part of the.
Yeah, so Baker &amp; Taylor has, basically, it's like a twenty to thirty percent charge on each book. And it's making, it'll make the accounting side of things much easier. Because right now, because the processing is separated out, they have to go line by line in the budget to assign it to the appropriate type of format. So what it is, is that fifty thousand has been, that's why you see that, like, DVDs went up. It's why the book, physical book budget stayed the same, because we're incorporating the processing into those.
So, but then, doesn't that mean if the expenditures for books will not change, you're not gonna be able to buy as many books with that money? Because now you're paying a surcharge for the processing.
We made the decision to spend more in terms of electronic resources in there, so that those budgets went up more.
Got it.
And, and there was an emphasis by the, the library managers to do quite a bit of weeding and be more focused in the physical book ordering in the next year. So that's where that, why that number stayed the same.
Okay, and then I'm just wondering about the insurance fees and what the, what the pressures were that caused those to rise so sharply.
I'm gonna lean on Nicole, who's in the room next to me, but I believe it was due to the large amount of payouts.
Yeah.
I was guessing that was what it was. I wondered.
She's all good, is Nicole?
Yes, that's correct.
There was an initial increase on that that happened last year, but I guess they've saved the bulk of it for, for next year, so.
Yeah, I remember being surprised that it didn't go up that much last year, because we all kind of thought we saw it coming, so now the chickens have come to roost, as they say.
Yeah, and when, and when Cindy saw that number, Cindy Byram, she did a little bit of investigating with other places to see if it was worth like, shopping for, and we determined that it was not.
All right, that's all my questions.
Any other questions on the finance, or excuse me, on the Budget Committee report? Okay, perfect, then let's move on. C V R A Committee, I have no report at this time. District Director Evaluation Process. Betsy, is there any report you'd like to give there?
Nothing different than what you said when we came out of our closed session, so.
Great, then, Jason, I'll hand it to you for the Facility Committee report.
All right. So I'm really just gonna highlight some of the additional details from the report I gave in the last meeting. If folks remember, and, you know, you'll get more details in the ARG review later on in the agenda. But really, where we've decided to move our work is to move forward on, you know, really researching what it would take and the timelines for the bond measure or related options for funding, which we heard about earlier tonight. But then also, looking at, you know, what can we, you know, budget off of that list the ARG identified in our current and future budgets? And so I want to commend, you know, Nikki and Jonathan specifically, if, you know, you guys can see this list that's contained here. And then I'm sure the Budget Committee had and will have some input on this as well, but, you know, there's quite a few things here that are being identified that really get to to the biggest priorities of the work that we did, you know, one being accessibility at the main branch, and then the second one being really just kind of upgrading the Bob Lucas branch and making it more prominent in the community. So folks can see that list. And then we'll, we'll talk about it more under new business, but, you know, obviously, just to reemphasize, you know, one way or another, we're gonna have to make a decision at some point on funding options. It's just, you know, we've, we've pared down the cost of this stuff as much as we can, and it's obviously still quite a bit more money than we could ever budget for in our, in our regular budget, so. That is the report.
Okay. One point of information question. What does A H U stand for at the bottom of that chart? Replace Community Room, A H U?
It has to do with some specific piece of the HVAC system. I know Jonathan could be way more thoughtful than myself in describing that.
It is, it is the air handler unit, basically, the HVAC system, yeah.
I figured A was air and U was unit, but I couldn't figure out H, so thank you.
We're trying to do everything we can to make sure that Jonathan doesn't have to go running up to the rooftop every time.
We still have, by, and I'm doing this from memory, but I think we've got close to ninety thousand dollars on spent in some capital lines that we have for this year's budget. So one of the things that, you know, we're looking forward to, and I know Jonathan's on the line here, would be some quotes for little jobs that can be done in advance of any, any capital that we raise on the bond market, given the, of course, the fact that we don't know if we're gonna be able to do that or not. So I think that this is a really good way to go for facilities, is identify the small jobs and get cracking on them.
Yeah.
And see how much ground we can cover.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, I think that's totally right. I wanna address one of the, just kind of get a, get a feel from you guys, if you wanna talk about this now, if you want to do it later, but basically, you know, recommendation number two from the Facilities Committee is that we take immediate steps to explore placing a bond measure on the November ballot. Would you like to talk about that now, or do you want to save that discussion again for, you know, sort of our new business A and B items? So talk about the actual, you know, study reports and our, our next steps on a political consultant.
I, I personally, and Terry, feel free to jump in, I personally think new business under B is where, I mean, because it's related, is where it might make the most sense to continue that discussion.
That's, that's my feeling as well, but I didn't wanna curtail any discussion.
Yeah, that's fine with me, sure.
Let's, let's save that then for discussion on, on B, because that's really, that's really the next realistic step there. Okay, cool. Anything else on the Facilities Committee report before we move on to our remaining reports? And I promise we'll take a quick break after reports before we do new business. All right, okay, Betsy, I'll, I'll hand it to you for our government liaison report.
Sure, I just wanted to briefly mention that I checked in with Judy Chu's office and Anthony Portantino's office and Chris Holden's office, and the letter that's in your packet on pages forty-seven and forty-eight, which actually was probably eight pages longer than this, of just many, many, many people's signatures, including our own Congresswoman Judy Chu, is just a bit of an update on the, you know, the possibility that there may be some kind of federal funding that comes down in, in one of these packages that they're doing for COVID-nineteen relief, and so, you know, just to kind of keep our eye on that future possibility was, was pretty much all I wanted to let you know about, things on the federal level. Really did not get any information of use from our state legislators, from, from Senator Portantino's office, I basically got from an aide, a list of places where you could go to apply for grants if you want to. But I think it's probably the form letter they sent out to everybody who's asking about COVID relief. the form letter they sent out to everybody who's asking about COVID relief, so. If I haven't already, Nikki, I'll, I'll sure forward that on to you. But I didn't think it was all that useful, and I did not hear back from Chris Holden's office, so just touching base with all those legislators is all I wanted to report.
Thank you. Okay, item G, let's move into our trustee reports. Anybody would like to make a report at this time?
I have a brief one.
Okay.
Which is, just to let you know that I have made the decision that I'm not going to seek reelection. I've been tossing this in my head for quite a while. And as you might know, I have, I don't know if I showed you guys this last time, twelve days till I retire. And man, miles to go before I sleep on that count, I can tell you. But anyway, I, 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 I think it's time to pass this baton, and so I, I got the advice from several quarters, including from our own potential demographer that, you know, any one of us who is not planning to run, you know, to inform sooner rather than later was his advice, just in terms of, you know, things that have to do with elections coming up, so May was, was the time, so that is my news.
Well, this is Gwen, and I'll just read you my, my letter to Nikki. I did speak with her, but Dear Director Winslow, I am writing this letter to inform you of my resignation as a trustee with the Altadena Library District, effective June first, twenty twenty. It has been my pleasure to serve on the trustee board for almost nine years. I believe that it is now time for me to step down and make way for new leadership. I would like to express my deep gratitude and respect to you and the trustee board for your loyal dedication and tireless service to the Altadena Library District. It has been an honor and a privilege working with each of you and our dedicated library staff. Furthermore, I am extremely proud of the leadership with which you exemplify as our new district director. I have no doubt that your leadership will continue to be highly effective and instrumental in leading the district into even greater heights. More importantly, I'm confident that your leadership will achieve the goals and objectives around what I believe to be the best kept secret in Altadena, our libraries. Serving as a trustee has been a wonderful experience, and I've learned a great deal. And while I will miss each of you, please know that I am available and willing to assist whenever possible, when the time permits. I wish you, the trustee and staff, all the best as you continue working on behalf of our community and uplifting our beautiful city, and with gratitude, Winn McMillan. And it took a lot of time to really think about that and but I think it's probably the best thing.
Gwen, I know that we're gonna, we're gonna miss you your voice and what you bring to this board. We're gonna miss you tremendously. And I certainly can understand your decision, and I, I respect it completely, but I will personally say that I'm, I'm really gonna miss having you on the board. And I'm still gonna sit next to you at events, because that's where it goes down.
That's where it is.
Where it is. But, but to you certainly, for your many, many years of service, I mean, I, I don't think we could, we could thank you enough. You've been here through all the ups and downs for this library, and I, I am very grateful for your, your continued dedication through some very difficult times. And certainly to Betsy, I am, I am so sad that we're not gonna have you after November. I mean, I, again, I completely understand, but gosh, just having, having your voice and your expertise as a librarian and your, your very perceptive and thoughtful approach to everything has been such a gift to this whole district. And I, I hope that I hope that you'll allow us to continue to ask you questions from time to time and and seek your counsel, because I, I know that I always feel the benefit of your wisdom. I, I always really appreciate hearing what you have to say and and what your take on something is.
Thank you. Ain't going nowhere, still here at the top of the hill. And one of you could join us for coffee, and it wouldn't be a problem anymore.
Oh, my God, that, right, we could talk about stuff. What?
That would be great.
Yeah, I'll just, go ahead, Terry.
I'm just gonna say that's kind of a double, a double whammy there. So I'm so, I'm so sorry to hear it. Happy for you personally, and I think, I think, you know, you're making choices based on what you need to do, and I, and I get that. I, I do feel that we're a really good team, the five of us, and we've already, I think, gotten a lot done in just a couple of years and guided the library through some really treacherous waters. So, you know, Gwen, you especially can hang your hat on that. You've done a terrific job. And when you said nine and a half years, I went, well, you know what? That's about time for just about anybody, so. Good for you for, for hanging in there all that time. And Betsy, that's, oh my, I was, I was fixing to brag on you, Betsy, about the article that you had in the Star News on Sunday.
I meant to mention that, too.
So there's still time to talk about that, but that was a really nice piece, and I, I, of course, wish you the best to retirement. You're gonna find it so fun, but also so boring. You're gonna be back for the appointment as soon as you see it.
Well, you know, it's not, it's not out of the realm of, realm of possibility. I kind of wish that this had come along in my life more like now than two years ago or three years ago, three years ago, I guess. Because, you know, it would have been nice to have a way to transition within my career and still be, you know, have part of my career when I'm, when I'm not employed in it anymore. But man, when I put my toe in the water, I feel like my ankle got grabbed and and I, you know, I, I'm, I'm proud of how far we've come. I mean, it's kind of amazing that I'm the second most, you know, the second, not oldest necessarily, but the second most long-standing trustee on this board. You know, Gwen, Gwen is just our institutional memory going back so far. And has been through so much, so, you know, I, I just feel like, you know, things are in really good hands and
They are.
And also, you know, I think as we, as we go forward into, you know, more years of elections, what, I think we're kind of new at elections, just because there's been so much appointment over the years that I think that's gonna take a shift in mindset in our, in our community and the people who might be toying with those ideas kind of need to get the message that, you know, it's time, it's time to put your toe in the water now.
It's true.
Yeah, so, anyway, it was a very hard decision for me, I gotta tell you. I went back many times.
And I can't tell you how hard it was for me.
Yeah.
But it's good, all good.
Well, Gwen, we're really gonna, I mean, this is so sudden, we don't even give you, get to give you like a little hug and a cake or something at the next board meeting.
Waited for these virtual meetings to do this.
She's not gonna get away that easily. We're gonna, we're gonna make, once we can have real board meetings again, we're gonna request your presence.
I'll be happy to be there and sit in the audience, and I'll have a couple of questions for each of you.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I think, you know, this is probably a good moment to just take a very quick break.
Okay.
Let's take a, let's take a, like a five-minute recess. We'll come back at eight forty-five and jump into the, the second half of our business. So we'll pause for a second here, and I'll see everybody back here at eight forty-five.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We can just turn off, right?
Yep.
Just when things couldn't get worse, they got worse for me. I put, I put on, I put on some slow-cooked chili today, you know? And with beans in it and everything is slow cooked, it had never turned on.
Oh, no.
I'm just now digging into it, because, you know, to help with my blood sugar, and they're still not even cooking. Oh, my God.
Oh.
I know.
So Chloe let me know that our YouTube allows eight hours FYI.
I'm ready.
As we're nearing hour five.
Somebody's in trouble if we hit that. I don't know who, but somebody.
I just think it's ironic that whenever I think there's gonna be a short agenda, I jinx myself, you know?
I'm just really pumped that I don't have to wear heels like I'm not wearing right now. It's great.
And I'll just add that I am only willing to accept those previous two announcements on two conditions. One is Gwen needs to recruit a teacher to replace her. Betsy needs to recruit a librarian to replace her. Then we can accept.
Somebody's out there. Somebody is out there.
I believe that. I believe that. All right, guys, let's come on back. So it's eight forty-six. Gwen, if we can get your camera and your lovely voice back. Yay, there she is.
Okay.
All right, guys, here we go. So we're gonna move into the second half of our agenda. Nikki, do you want to speak briefly on item seven, our East Protocol?
Sure. So last month, we presented it to the board, asking for feedback for changes or updates or anything like that. Having received none, we basically adopted that document as what we're operating off of. As you are all aware, we're in Level Two now, which is, we're not open to the public, but we have staff back. And we're just gonna continue to assess how we can change service, offer different things. And then again, like continuing to follow guideline or guidance from LA County Public Health, the State of California, into when we can move into Level Three, which would be limited service. So, I mean, today was our first day. I'm sure I'll have more to update the board on by our next meeting, but we're just gonna abide by the document that we provided. There were no changes, so I didn't include it in the packet. I thought a hundred ninety-seven pages was probably enough for you guys. I'll sort out with that.
Perfect. Any questions on that?
Just a comment that I'm just so grateful that that committee just feels like it has so totally risen to this occasion. I mean, it just, it's just right on time, so.
And to commend that group, they were meeting anywhere from one to three times a week discussing that, once they established that document, they've been working on, we developed guidelines for reopening and social distancing for staff, as well as the cliffside process and discussions about how to safely bring returns in. So they, they were a very busy team while we were closed, or while staff wasn't in the building, I should say. So, and Helen Milner was their leader, so kudos to her. She did a great job.
Yeah.
Great.
And I think it's great that we did it in a, with a team effort, too. Like, this is the kind of thing that, like, a lot of other agencies, like whoever's in quote-unquote in charge would have just said, here's what we're gonna do. And I can tell you, just in my professional world, in healthcare, that's just about the worst possible way to approach this kind of stuff, so I just want to applaud the, you know, Altadena approach on it.
Agreed, and I do think there's been more embracing of it by staff, because we had frontline staff writing it. You know, they're the ones that are gonna have to interact with the patrons and carry the services out that we're talking about, so I agree with you, Jason. I was in a California State Library Directors Zoom meeting. So I agree with you, Jason. I was in a California State Library Director's Zoom meeting last week. And there's been a lot of pushback on coming back, but especially, I think, when the directive came from on high and people didn't feel like they were heard in the process.
Yep.
Very good.
Okay, um, let's move into new business. So this brings us to item eight A, the review of ARG architectural and review study reports. The staff report for this begins on page forty-nine of your packet, and then the ARG reports follow. Nikki, this is an information item, so would you mind just sort of briefly summarizing where we are?
Right. Um, this, as I put in the staff report, ARG was hired by the board back in August. As all of you know, we had two sets of town hall meetings after the facilities committee meeting, or facilities committee met with ARG to kind of lay out a plan. So first, you know, we had our first meeting with the public, both here at Bob Lucas or at Main Library and at Bob Lucas to gather feedback. After that, we met with staff to hear their thoughts on, you know, the architectural and design review elements that they thought were important. From there, Liz and her team put together like two to three options for each building based on the things that were, were said in the town halls. We then commenced to have two more town halls in January, in which we presented like two, a finalized two options to get more feedback from the public. Once we did that, they went to the drawing board basically based on the final option that was chosen for each building, and then moved into the cost estimating. And as I put in the report, the cost estimates came in. I think it was close to twenty-one million dollars between both projects. So once all of us got our jaws off the floor, we then had another meeting with ARG to talk about. Of course, we think all of the work is important, but really, what do we need to do in order to make Main Library ADA compliant? Because as you know, like, if you're going to move an elevator, then there's just other things that you're going to have to do in the process, including, you know, new bathrooms in the basement and relocating the front entrance. And so she went back to the cost estimator, and as I put in the staff report, also set up a priority one, priority two, priority three, so that we can really see that, you know, for main to be where we want it to be in terms of people of all mobility to be able to get into it without issue, we're at eight point three million. So that's a quick summary. You know, the, both reports are very detailed, but we definitely wanted the board to be able to see the whole process, the recommendations, and the costs that are associated with all of that. And Terry and Jason, if you have, or Jonathan, have anything to add, please feel free.
I just want to just really thank Liz and Marcos and the rest of the team from ARG. You know, to be quite honest, from my perspective, they went above and beyond what their contract required them to. And, you know, without hesitation, you know, there was never a conversation of, you know, pretty much anything we asked for from the committee, you know, sure, absolutely, we can do that. So just really amazing work and dedication to this project from them. And then once again, I just, you know, I want to thank everybody else on the committee, the folks that are here tonight, Jonathan and Terry and Nikki, but also the other folks from the library that participated, including our branch manager. Because it was a lot of work, but I think the, the end result is tremendous. And it really gives us, I believe, a pretty detailed roadmap as to, you know, where we need to go in the near future.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jason, about, I think we got more out of them than we expected to. And there were never any complaints. They always showed up and did their job. It was a pleasure working with that group.
Yeah, thanks to the board for selecting them. I appreciate it. They were an excellent company to work with. And you could tell, like, Liz is invested in Altadena.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a really great process.
And the quality of their deliverables has been outstanding as well. I mean, every time I have a thought where I'm like, wait, what if we didn't? And I'm like, oh, yeah, it's on the report. It's really good. It's really comprehensive. It really is thorough. And I, I just so appreciate all of the time they put into coming up with ways for us to, you know, meet our obligations, but still, you know, try to, try to be as conservative as we can.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, you know, I think the bottom line of this, and, and Nikki, Terry, Jason, please tell me if you think that this is accurate, is that we're looking at a minimum of something like ten or eleven million dollars to do the bare bones work that would be required to make us no longer in violation of the law. There are a lot of other things that we could do as well that would represent, you know, an improvement of services and facilities to the community, but our sort of bare bones budget is something like eleven million dollars. Is that pretty accurate?
I would just say, I think it's better than bare bones. I think especially at the Bob Lucas, because a lot of what we're proposing to do there, I don't think is, it's certainly not legally required, but it's just quite frankly, the right thing to do.
Okay.
For the community. You know, I would say it might be a little more accurate at the main branch to say that we're doing the minimum, but, you know, I think in some ways, we're going above and beyond that, too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, not the minimum in terms of like, it's not going to be good. I'm just saying, like, the, the, the least amount of money that we could spend and still meet our legal obligation and like do the basic, basic stewardship of our properties, right? Like, the roof is gonna, oh, we gotta fix the roof, right? So that, that, I should have phrased that better. You're absolutely right, but that's, that's kind of where we're coming in, is that?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Well, given that big price tag, this is obviously why we have item eight B. So, but I don't want to, I don't want to move on to that before we have any other discussion that needs to happen on eight A. Are there, are there questions? Are there observations? Are there things people want to dive into in terms of the report that came back from ARG or what that looked like? Is there anything that we want to get into here before we move on to sort of what do we do about it?
Well, the only observation I would make is that this is the, the fresh set of costs, right? And right away, they start to get away from us. They start trending upward because of inflation and so on. So we've already been through this three or four times in the last, you know, dozen years about getting price estimates and then having them go obsolete basically within a year or two. So, you know, that hopefully is enough fire to get it, get us going, get the community going, too.
Right, right, absolutely.
So I'm really concerned because when I'm reading both of these, one on page eighty, it looks like that's a million dollars. Almost a million and a half for the branch. And then thirteen, looks like the lowest figure here. Or the, and that's on page twenty-seven. Or did I miss something? And you're saying Katie's eleven?
So I'm combining Gwen, the, basically the two to get the branch done and the functionally eight, I think it's eight point three, eight point five. Yeah. To do main.
Where do you find eight point five? Because I don't.
It's a, it's a round number. What, it's, if you go to the staff report, Nikki's got it spelled out, but if you want to look at ARG's report, it is on page.
I was looking at ARG's report, I thought, on page one twenty-seven. And also page.
It's in there. Let me.
A page.
The first page you mentioned, Gwen, for the Bob Lucas, that one is accurate, so it's a total of like one point nine to do.
Yeah, one point nine, which is really two, two million.
Two million, yeah.
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 Then.
Then there's thirteen or twenty million. And I know that they did another assessment, and I can't remember who that was that did that assessment. And they, it sort of said that they would not raise twenty million dollars to help with this library. And I can't, I, I was trying to find that information today, but I, I guess we've thrown some of that stuff away and I couldn't find it.
So it's page one thirty-five.
Is it one thirty-five? Okay, I was looking for the other.
That's the priority one column, so that's basically all the stuff that, that we need to do and that it makes sense to do at the same time.
One thirty-five, okay.
And then if you, and you can, yeah, so this is one of the biggest projects we asked ARG to do. If you guys remember, what we had asked for is like a phased in approach, and this is, it's kind of doing that, but. So it's priority one, which is essentially what, is the stuff we really, it's, we can't pare it down anymore. That's the stuff we have. That's eight point three. If we decided we wanted to seek additional funding, there's a whole set of things that are listed in column two that would be an additional three point eight million. And then a whole nother set of things in priority number three, which is an additional three point four. It's like, if you add all four columns, like, that's where you start getting into the like twenty million range.
Yeah.
And those are all awesome things, right? Like, those are all things that were identified by the community as things people want, as positives that would be great to have. But, you know, they're just like really expensive, too. So I think that's where we start to get into, you know, what's, what's realistic in terms of financing and what's not. Because in the world of infinite money, it would be awesome to do all of them. But, you know, probably not super realistic in terms of financing.
Yeah.
But this does, the, does this boat, one thirty-four, one thirty-five, does that include both the branch as well as the main?
No. No, they're split out.
Okay.
So when you add that eight point three priority one column plus the two for Bob Lucas, that's where I'm saying like ten, eleven million.
We didn't.
Which essentially means you fit me really a contingency, and you don't have that in here of about two, two, three, even four million dollars more because of the expenses that you probably, although these might be estimates, you still run into some, maybe some other charges that we're not even aware of.
Yeah, you can count on cost overruns and things like that, as you're talking about, Gwen, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll just point out, too, Gwen, just because they, they do look quite a bit different. We didn't do the three different priority columns from Bob Lucas branch, because we were, essentially, we were able to get that total cost to a place where it wasn't necessarily about priorities. It was about just getting everything done that we wanted to do within what we believe is a reasonable budget. That's why we did it a little differently.
Okay.
Well, and just to point out, I was just comparing to the cost estimates per line. That does include the one, times one point five.
Yeah.
So like the roof, the nine ninety-four, nine hundred ninety-four thousand fifty-six, that includes that one point five overrun cost.
So we're, we're assuming everything costs a hundred and fifty percent of what it costs.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah.
So that's built in, but even still.
Though, yeah.
Like, it makes sense to, to have some, some room in that budget.
Yeah.
Exactly the reasons you outlined. Okay. Anything else on the ARG report before we move into item B?
I just want to say, I just feel like the process has been so clear and communicated all along the way that even though this is, you know, half of our packet, I feel like I already knew. I mean, you know, I didn't know every single line item, but this is not news to me. I just feel like you're rolling it up, like reminding us of stuff we've already discussed and talked about. So it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel like giving it short shrift to say, yeah, right, that's what we, that's what we've been talking about for months and months. So it's just, it's just, to me, it's a testament to how well the process has been crafted all along, and I appreciate that.
I agree with you, Betsy. I think that's totally right. And I, I think, you know, kudos to ARG, but also kudos to the facilities committee for making sure, really eating the crack for those of us who haven't been in the room in all of those meetings. I think it's really been super transparent and easy to understand, and, and your reasoning has been so clear all the way along. It's been great.
Another testament to good teams.
Absolutely.
It's true.
Yeah.
And one of the suggestions by someone on the foundation board was, as we're moving into needing to fundraise, generally, whether that's through donations or bonds or whatever we're going to do, is to create a, a site on the webpage that outlines this entire process. So now that we've included architectural and design work, we'll outline that, we'll have the documents available for people to read. And then as we continue to move forward, we can outline, you know, our, our funding strategies and, and turn it almost into like its own little campaign site, you know?
Good idea.
Exactly.
So that was suggested to me, and now that these are, been reviewed by you guys, we'll get that moving forward.
I think that's smart. That's really smart. And it makes sense to connect it all in one place so that nobody goes, why are we doing this? What do you need twelve million dollars for? It's like, well, get ready. Here we go.
Well, and if we can tackle some of these smaller projects, we can put photos and highlight what the funding is really accomplishing. So people feel good about it, too.
Absolutely.
And, and you're both are right. I just recall that they've done a fabulous job in laying out how, the cost of all of that. And if indeed you, we can put something on the website so that people can see that and view that. There was also, when I was on the foundation, with, they were thinking about asking people to really decide if they would be responsible for five, five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. And if indeed there was something that met that, I remember the, the carpet that was in Bob Lucas was donated by some contractor. I, I don't remember his name or whatever, but it could be that that might be something that we might look at. And there might be people in the community who might reach out to doing a twenty thousand dollar thing. But they've done, it, it's, it's really here and it's really fabulous, and we just need to make it work.
So I could fund the Betsy Khan air handler unit?
Absolutely.
Jonathan. You connected, Jonathan.
Absolutely.
That's on the record now. It's on the YouTube. You can make out your forty thousand dollar check directly.
I'm gonna tell you how to handle, handle your air.
It's just advice.
That is something that has, like, we have, like, in seriousness, though, have discussed that, you know, like.
Like people sponsoring different.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, like, did, you know, you could turn the bridge in the main campus into a memorial bridge in somebody's honor. You could, the green court that we want to put in at Lucas, right? You know, it should be something that enhances the mural that's already there that we also need to, you know, do some upkeep on. But I think there are some very amazing opportunities for that kind of work, too, that is, that would honor people's legacies, for sure.
Well, and this sort of brings me to a question that only requires an executive action, not a board vote, but I wanted to get your guys' feel on it, which is, obviously, we're moving into a new stage of this game where we've got, you know, major undertakings, right? Like, these projects are going to be extensive. They're going to be
Yeah.
high cost. They're going to require a lot of work. Does it make sense to form, to either, you know, put that within the bailiwick of one of our existing committees? Right? In thinking about like development, messaging, campaign strategy, like all of that. Does it make sense to, to put that within facilities, within budget? Does it make sense to create a new committee to kind of handle that as their exclusive charge? I wanted to get your guys' feedback on that because I think it's going to be, it's going to be a separate undertaking from the facilities process, right? And so I, I don't know that it necessarily falls neatly within the charge of that committee. Same thing, it's going to be a separate, separate set of jobs from just strictly the budget committee. So maybe we can get some discussion on that.
I think it's critical to have something to help drive.
I think.
Essentially political work. Essentially political work.
Yeah, basically. It's, it's basically a political process. Well, it's, it's a messaging and campaign process, right?
Absolutely. And then the foundation as well as the friends need to be a part of whatever that looks like.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. My inclination is to form a separate, a separate committee on um I think it could be called public financing, which would wrap in some of the questions about modeling, some of the questions about bonding, parcel tax, like all of that. And, and honestly, that's a committee that needs to kind of be in gear now regardless of what we decide to do because you know, if we do this parcel tax campaign separately, then there needs to be some organization on that front now.
I actually had that question in my notes for the next piece of the agenda because the, there, there's actually, there's, there was a line that stood out to me from the polling group about needing to have a committee in place to be part of that.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think it makes sense to go ahead and run that as an ad hoc committee. Does that, does that seem reasonable to everybody?
And I agree with Gwen, you know, I think this, this is a committee that necessitates having uh representation from the friends in the foundation.
Community.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing that, I mean, you could call you, you and I, Katie, the budget and finance committee, right? And, you know, try to, we could talk about that a little bit, put it all in under one umbrella. I like the idea though of a separate committee as an ad hoc committee though, because it makes it a little bit more nimble.
Yeah.
You're not just, you know, regurgitating the public expenditures to people. You've got, there's a lot of creativity that would go into something like that.
That's right. And I, I think that the budget committee as a standing committee has a very specifically designed set of responsibilities that are important and it's important that those are noticed and in public session and all of that. But I think there's a lot of conversation that's gonna need to happen around um, around public financing that would be better handled by an ad hoc committee. So that's, that's sort of my inclination. If I'm recalling my bylaws correctly, um, I can go ahead and create an ad hoc committee. I would definitely like to be on it. Um, do I have other folks who would be willing to jump on?
I'm probably the one that is least uh tied up with all the other stuff everybody's doing. It's not an area that I feel like I have particular strength or skill at. I mean, I, I could certainly be a worker bee on such a committee. I wouldn't see myself as leading it. Um, but I am certainly available if it makes sense for me to be the one or A1.
Okay. Anybody else wanna volunteer?
I'll volunteer from the, for the community.
I will pick you up on that. I will, well, I will.
I really, you know, I'm a glutton for punishment. I, I understand. Work with somebody, I will work with you guys uh from the community.
I hear you. I, and I appreciate that so much.
Okay.
I like, I like doing that kind of stuff. Uh, finance and they've had a lot of experience at it. I think we're gonna know pretty quickly whether it's a, a committee that's gonna have any immediate staying power because um we need to get through the feasibility part of doing the public offering anyway. And that's really other than the stuff that Jason has talked about, we've worked on that committee to get some piecemeal jobs done. Uh, my fear, uh, and I hate to, you know, rain on the parade, is that it's gonna be a tough couple of years to get your tax initiative, you know, accepted by the public among the dozens and dozens, dozens of others that we're all gonna have to deal with, with municipalities being in distress and so on. So uh, I think, you know, we'll get the answer pretty quickly about whether a finance committee is even needed to tell you the truth. But uh, I, I like it. I mean, if, you know.
It's gonna be needed because we have to do something on the parcel tax, right? Like we can't throw our hands and say, well, I guess it's not gonna happen.
No, and the partial tax, I, I totally agree with that, yeah.
And so I, I see it having some longevity. And if we call it a public financing committee, then it can, you know, it can work on not just our, our bond initiative and, you know, uh, a CFD. But also uh, also the parcel tax and whatever iteration.
I would just make a recommendation to the committee that one, I mean, one of the first things I would recommend is, is get a kind of detailed debrief on the last campaign. If, if you guys need to get in touch with uh Judy who was hired to kind of run that, I can connect you, um, if you care to hear from her and the work she did.
That would be very helpful. Okay. Well, then, uh, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and create an ad hoc public finance committee. I will go ahead and share it. And Betsy, if you would join me on that, I would be thrilled. Okay, perfect. And we're gonna define the scope of this committee as looking at um public financing options for the Altadena Library District. The end.
Okay, real quick, we do have a public comment.
Oh, great.
So I'll put them on speaker.
That's tremendous.
All right. You're on, Bridget.
On where?
Just, you're on speakerphone and you are on public comment. So you might wanna mute your YouTube because there is a slight delay.
All right, I have it on silence.
So go ahead, Bridget.
Thank you. I just really would like to say as you consider how you're gonna describe and define this committee.
It might be easier if you mute the YouTube in the background.
I thought I did. I thought I turned it off. Is it off now? So sorry.
It's, yes.
Did I just say that out loud? Okay, I just wanna say I would suggest that the name reflects um the whole community. I'm so sorry, this is not there.
I think you're good now. We can hear you pretty clear.
Hear you.
What I suggest is that you might call it public funding, not public finance. That you're looking to gather people together, or particularly your trustees, to look at uh ways to fund what you're doing, not, not to be the gatekeepers of the finance of the project, but rather looking at creative ways to raise funds for the various projects.
Okay. Yeah, I'm into that. Does anybody have any objection? I think that's a nice idea.
Yeah.
No.
I, I.
That's great.
Know Bridget, what, what's the distinction in your mind? Is that because then that, if we call it funding, then we could include fundraising and what we're thinking about? Not just.
Exactly, because you're not looking at a, somebody to be a bookkeeper or an accountant. And I think the term finance tends to have that um kind of a broad perspective, correct or not, it's a perspective.
Yeah, I can totally, I can totally see that. Um, okay, yeah, suggestion accepted. I'd love to be a public comment. This is awesome. Thank you for calling, Bridget.
I'm just glad somebody's watching this on you.
Yeah, me too.
Exactly.
Okay, um, well then, given that, I'm going to create a public funding committee for the Altadena Library District and it will be composed of Betsy and myself. And we will uh investigate and collaborate with any and all available partners to find ways to fund our capital and service needs for the district. And it will uh automat, I think our ad hoc committees automatically expire at the end of the calendar year. And so we would reconstitute at that point if we need to.
And I think at this point, the facilities ad hoc committee, we've completed what our task was unless there isn't a decision made to expand it for some reason.
I can't remember. This is terrible. I can't remember what the original scope of the facilities committee.
It was just to produce this report with ARG.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we evaporate now.
Okay, all right. Well, that's.
Terry and I await our next assignment.
Listen, you know, again, we're, we're taking, we're taking, applicating. Um, okay. Perfect. Um, all right, so that committee exists now and that's really exciting. So Betsy, you and I, and I think Nikki can get together in the next week or so and, and figure out, you know, what our, what our next steps look like. But I feel a lot better that there's a group working on it.
Okay, before we leave that, just let me just make sure that anybody who just lost a committee appointment because your committee finished. You really love the idea of this committee. I don't wanna take it away from you. I, it's, I'm not doing it because I love the idea. I'm doing it because I don't really have much else in committee work right now. Six month evaluation.
So now neither to either of you. You wanna do it? Well, Terry's on the budget committee. Jason, you wanna do it?
Um, I'm, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna push somebody out of the way that wants to go on tackle something new. Um, but I'll, I'll volunteer if that's what folks want me to do. I feel like, Betsy, you just need to go out with a bang though.
That's fine. I'm happy to do it. I, I just want, I'm just, again, the caveat, not my, not my strongest skill set, but I am.
I think it goes without saying that um, as this thing progresses, it's gonna be all hands on deck, one way or another.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I have a feeling that the next couple of months are gonna be a lot of fact finding and planning. And so.
Well, and in twelve days, I'm gonna have lots of time. Working days, not twelve calendar days.
Oh, twelve, okay, got it.
June fifth.
I was just gonna say, Betsy probably wants the meeting in twelve days.
Honestly, no, my next two and a half weeks are not gonna be fun, so.
Yeah.
Sometime after that.
Sure. Fair enough. Um, okay, very good. Then let's move on to um item eight B, authorization for the director to hire an outside vendor for political consultation work. Uh, this is an action item. We have a staff report that appears on uh, page hundred and forty-three of your packet. Um, Nikki, do you wanna talk about this a little bit?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Nicole and I wrote the, the staff report together. This came on pretty quickly, as I'm sure you can all imagine. When we, we had a meeting, I believe, earlier in April with Mike from Columbia Capital who kind of laid out this process for us. And one of the things that he let us know was your first step is hiring a political consultant because you have to dip your toe in the pool to gauge whether or not you can even carry this type of thing forward. So after hearing that and um speaking individually with Katie and Terry as budget committee members, we asked um Columbia Capital if they had political consultants that they've worked with and would recommend. They did give us um the three vendors that we're presenting to you tonight that, um, that we asked to put together a proposal to do this feasibility study and work that we would need to be able to take this ballot initiative forward. Um, so these were the three um proposals that were turned into us within about the last two weeks. Um, Nicole and I did, as you can see from reading through the staff report, review them um completeness, um, as well as really an analysis of the community and who we thought has a good sense for how to survey and poll the people that live in Altadena, as well as be able to be flexible and work with us to carry this forward. It does outline, and which was covered in the presentation earlier by Sarah, um, what we're looking at in terms of a timeframe. Again, that's if we push forward um after doing the feasibility study. We really, this, this may feel a bit rushed, but um as you can see, we would have to have um our letter of intent or our intent meeting on June twenty-second. So if we can um offer, you know, a contract to, we're, we're suggesting that it's Clifford Moss tonight. If the board votes that way, then we do have a full five weeks um for them to start, you know, and carry out that feasibility study work. Because again, if we don't find that the community is open to it, then I think we're gonna have to reassess when we will move forward with it. So again, right now, the fiscal impact, if you take a look at it, initially, each of them charges, I don't remember exactly um what it is monthly, but it would be for that first month of fees to do the feasibility study. Um, looking at fiscal impact overall, which would ta, take us through the campaign process. Clifford Moss came in at fifty-one thousand seven hundred. TBWBH was sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty and NBS was forty-five thousand. Again, not just based on cost, but we thought thoroughness of um their analysis of the community, um, and just really who we felt chose the best polling um agency as well. Our recommendation from staff is that the board moves forward with offering a contract to Clifford Moss for political consulting for us. And I'm happy to answer any more questions. Nicole's still here as well. She also reviewed all of it with me.
I have a quick question based on um something that Sarah said in her presentation today. She said, before you do any polling, we would have to get NBS to, we would have to get our costs together, which I, I think we basically have, but there would need to be some sort of tax roll process that NBS would do, and then they would hand that to the political consultants. Do these costs reflect that process or would that be an additional fee to NBS that we have not budgeted in here?
I think Nicole can answer that.
So that would be an additional fee payable to NBS. The scope of their services uh is close to forty thousand dollars.
Would we have to pay that regardless of whether we hire them to do the polling or not?
We, no. So you mean to hire NBS to do the polling?
No, okay. So I'm saying that when NBS was saying, or when Sarah was saying earlier, you know, the first step would be to do um, get your costs together and then we would figure out what that would look like in terms of your tax thing, and then we would do some polling. Was that based on the assumption that we would hire them to do the polling? Or if we hired Clifford Moss, would we still have to pay NBS to do something to figure out what our price points are that we're asking about? Do you know what I, does that make sense? Am I being clear here at all?
Yes, no, that makes sense. We, we have to hire NBS no matter what. Uh, we don't have to hire them to do the polling. There is an initial upfront cost that Sarah mentioned in order for Clifford Moss to do um the feasibility study. And then there is an additional fee if we decide to move forward with the CFD payable to NBS in order for them to implement the CFD for us.
So what is the upfront fee to NBS?
I would have to look at their proposal again. The total cost for them to, to complete the process would be the additional forty thousand dollars.
Right.
In essence, are we talking, are we talking about a hundred thousand dollars?
Exactly, yeah.
Oh, my.
Yeah, it's really expensive.
And then Nicole, I had a question too about the uh, the cost for the election, the idea, let's say we do March third and we go through the county and they mail the ballots and stuff. Any idea what something like that would cost?
Um, no, I mean, for a, for a trustee election, it's, it's anywhere from sixty to ninety thousand dollars. So that's kind of where I would ballpark it.
And guys, remember that these costs also don't include anything that we would spend on conducting an actual campaign, right? Doesn't include us mailing out flyers or hiring somebody to handle it or, you know, printing up stuff or any, anything. This is just consulting stuff, uh, which, you know.
I didn't think it was that expensive.
It is very expensive.
I mean, the other thing I'll say as far as the choice and approving the company itself is, you know, I did put in a call to uh my statewide political director at work. And I'll say, you know, besides what are the obvious things in their uh proposal, they do have a very strong reputation. Uh, and then EMC specifically, which is the kind of subcontracting they do for the actual polling work. Uh, we've actually used them numerous times for statewide polling for, for ballot measures. Uh, some of which have been very complicated and they've frankly done quite amazing work. So you know, to the question of, are we making the right decision as to which proposal to, to choose, I, I think we're on that question, we're making the right decision. I, I think we're, on that question, we're making the right decision.
I would really echo that. I mean, I, I was very impressed by Clifford Moss's proposal. I appreciated that they had done the time, or they, excuse me, it's late, that they had spent the time to do their homework and like, knew who we were, had read our documentation, had looked at our website, read our strategic plan, like they really, they got the feel. And I mean, totally agree with you, Jason, like their polling firm is, is super legit. Um, NBS doesn't really offer any polling at all, which is sort of what we need out of this. Um, so that to me is dispositive. And the other, uh, other firm basically contracts with a guy. He's a guy. I mean, I'm sure he's good at what he does, but I would feel much more confident with a firm that has a long history of really good results and high quality practices, um, versus like putting all of our future fiscal planning decisions on.
The one question I do have, and I don't even know if we need to answer it for this decision, is and I think Terry was kind of getting to this point earlier in the agenda. I, you know, until, until Sarah's presentation, I didn't realize that one of our options would be to essentially roll this into the, uh, property tax assessment continuation. And if I understood her right, we could make a decision to actually hold that vote earlier as part of rolling these two things together. And I feel like I didn't know that until her presentation, and in my mind, I'm thinking, even if that means we don't pull the trigger for a November vote, my gut tells me that's frankly the best way to go. Um, frankly, from a messaging perspective too, right? I think starting all the way back with, uh, the community conversations with a strategic plan, I think we've been abundantly clear and have had a lot of community input on, you know, what is our long-term goals with our libraries?
Yep.
Um, and all this stuff bleeds together, right? Uh, and if we could have, I feel like we've asked so much of the community with, for input, that if we have the opportunity to do, to just tackle this in one big conversation with the community, even if that means putting it off for six months or something, um, versus, all right, we're going to come and do this now, and then we'll see you in two years. And I feel like it's an easier conversation, right? Because it's not like it's two different things. I mean, you know, separating facilities from everything else. I mean, the reality is, is that if we don't do some of this facilities work, the property tax office, like it's not going to be a building to, to, to house staff and, you know.
We need the buildings to deliver the services.
No, I, I agree with that. I mean, my, it's, I feel like it's definitely easier to go to the well once. I think it would be a mistake to try to do just from a, from a manpower and budget perspective, it would be a mistake to try to find all the energy and time and bandwidth to run a really good bond campaign. And then basically six months later, gear up to do the same thing for a parcel tax campaign. Yeah, like, remember how great you felt about voting last time? Well, guess what? It's all the same flavor.
And then you're going to have a conversation with all the people that are going to be like, didn't we just vote on that?
And, and they're. They're going to, exactly right. Um, yeah, I mean, I didn't, I also didn't realize until we heard from Sarah today that we could go on any ballot. I, for some reason, was under the impression that we had to do this on the November ballot. Um, and so finding that we've got more breathing room. Now, I, I don't think that we should do some random special election where nobody participates, but realizing that we have other choices beyond just November twenty twenty, given all of the instability and all of the rush that would be needed, I would be very in favor of taking a minute to figure out how to build the very absolute smartest architecture that we could. And then putting that on the ballot where we have the greatest chance of really good voter turnout and success.
And I think that's true, especially, um, when we, everybody has a, an opportunity to look at things. This is probably not a good time because of all the other stuff that's going on in our lives, but um, given as it is, I would really like for us to. But of course, now this guy says that this might be the best time, but I really just think that, um, going back to our communities and making sure that, you know, that we choose the time. Um, I know that, uh, sharing the cost of a ballot is really important too. So I, I just think I would like to wait instead of voting on this. Well, we could vote on it, yes, but.
Well, I.
I don't think I would like to push it to November though.
Well, so, right, and so what we're voting on tonight is not whether or not we go ahead and put something on the November ballot, but just whether we authorize Nikki to go ahead and contract with Clifford Moss so that we can start the process. Right? And bringing, um, bringing them on board will allow us to start unrolling that process, and it would get some expert set of eyes to look at this alongside with them. Um, and, and so it seems to me that that's a step that it's reasonable to go ahead and take at this point. Um, and I think we'll probably be able then to come back to the June meeting with a better set of action items, whether that is to in fact go ahead and move forward in November, to do something else, like I, I don't know where we're going to be. Uh, but I, I would like to go ahead and hire somebody now, or authorize Nikki to go ahead and hire somebody now so that we can start figuring out the answers to those questions. Um, and if we need to move quickly, I'd like to have the ability to do it, um, and it doesn't close off any options at this point.
I agree. I think we would have always needed political expertise because even though we're all politicians, we don't know very much about politics. Plus, I think a lot of people in our community, I mean, e- even the parcel tax was always going to be kind of a stretch. And now a lot of people who would have supported us gladly are broke, are going to be broke, or worried that they're going to be broke. And so political advice for people who know how to navigate those kinds of, I mean, everybody keeps saying unprecedented. Well, yeah, obviously, this is unprecedented. But I mean, the more, I think the more expertise we can have, it, it, the, the threading of the needle is now getting pretty fine, and I think we need help. I, I, I support. I support Nikki's request. I do too.
Well, I would make a formal motion that we move to approve Nikki's.
I'd like to, I'd like to weigh in real quick, you guys. Hang on a second. I can't see it, Mary. Yes. Um, sorry, I was getting some, uh, advice from my mi esposa. The, uh, my problem with this is I think the timing's wrong to do it a little bit. And if we're going to vote on this, I, I agree that Clifford Moss has done the best, uh, done the, the best proposal. What I'd like to make sure, and this is to you, Nikki, would be that feasibility becomes the first deliverable for this contract. And it's, it's a piece that we buy almost separately so that we can figure out what the next step will be. In other words, we don't want to get them going on several different fronts and having them wind up doing a big bill. Because we're talking from the, from the math that I can do, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if we take this thing to the mat and we take it to, let's say, March, uh, that seems a little bit more comfortable than November to me for a vote. Uh, we're, you know, kind of betting the house at that point that this is going to go for that amount of money. It's a lot to spend. So it just feels a little bit, I don't know, dicey to me. Some of the things I've learned and researched that I've done recently, and you heard a little bit about it earlier from a website that monitored carefully all the Measure A bills that were in the country, a hundred and fifty of them, a hundred and forty-seven. And, uh, many of them passed comfortably, but a lot of them didn't. And they found also that when there was a capital component attached to it, rather than an operating component, the margin of victory for them went down fifteen points. So it became, uh, it became a riskier thing just to have the capital part involved in all of this stuff. Now, I'm not saying Altadena's the same way, but I am saying that there are these sort of headwinds out there that are occurring. And then you wrap that up. I mean, everything has changed so much, uh, since this COVID thing hit. And it's going to be come and gone by the time that municipalities and library districts and sanitation districts and everybody you can think of is going to be, um, you know, trying to get money for their tax relief as well. It just feels a little too soon for me to, to go like all in. And I guess the compromise that I'm suggesting here, and again, Nikki, it's to you, would be to make sure that we get the feasibility deliverables done right upfront so that we can make a decision based on that versus getting involved with a lot of costs that we don't need to spend.
Right.
Um, I, I also think there's something to be said for really getting the projects that we can afford on our budget right now lined up and started and getting going. And then when we go back to the public as part of our story, whether it's a couple of months from now, or whether it's a year from now, what have you, we go to them saying, listen, we've used all the money we possibly can to get the improvement stuff. We've got this done, this done, the other thing. We, we can't go any farther. We really need public support now to make that happen. You can tell that story as well and show them, show us breaking ground a little bit and making some progress. I think that will carry some weight as well. So I would, uh, I didn't mean to cut off your motion there, Jason. But I just want to explain, I di- I didn't want to let those facts that I found not be reported to you, okay? Because I think everybody needs to know what the odds are a little bit on, on this whole thing happening.
I would agree.
So Terry, would that mean that you would support a motion to authorize Nikki to hire Clifford Moss for the first two of the three parts of their proposal? The ten thousand, ten, ten thousand consulting and twenty-six, seven for feasibility, but that we not yet authorize the fifteen thousand dollars to prepare the ballot measure? Until we know for sure that that is, I mean, you know, that it sounds like they've kind of, they've kind of written it that way. If the feasibility study determines a ballot measure would be successful, then they require more money.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm saying, is just make sure that that part is clarified and done. The other thing that they talked about in that proposal was the fact that, uh, they know other people will be bidding, and they, they volunteered to sharpen their pencil a little bit. There was a line in there about that. Uh, go back to them, say, hey, can you do a little bit better here, whatever? I just, I just want to break off that feasibility part so that we all know it's broken off and have that done first. And I wouldn't even put any verbiage in it, uh, I guess in the motion, other than to tell you, Nikki, that's the way I feel about it, and I, you would get my vote for this based on those things happening with you being the supervisor of all that.
Okay.
Because I mean, if you can, you can. You can. If you can't, you can't. I get that part of it too, so.
Yeah, okay. You want to go ahead and, um, make your motion?
My motion?
No, Jason.
Um, it's just a motion to authorize Nikki to, to hire, um, uh, Clifford, uh, Clifford Moss, uh, to conduct this feasibility study and the related polling.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Um, any further discussion or commentary before we proceed to a vote? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote on this one just because it is an action item. Um, so.
Let me ask this question before you move to that.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we are, uh, confirming that we're giving him ten thousand dollars as a down payment for this.
We're authorizing Nikki to go ahead and.
Okay.
And hire them at the best rate she possibly can and, and negotiate what that looks like. So we're just authorizing her to go ahead and move that process forward.
Okay, because I'm just thinking, are we doing this on just to reserve them with the ten thousand or the twenty-six, seven is what, um, the feasibility, feasibility study.
So the twenty-six, seven is what the polling costs?
And that's the feasibility.
It's part of the, the feasibility study encompasses, yeah, encompasses designing conducting the polling, overseeing the process, working with us, you know. So there's oversight involved in that as well.
Okay.
And that'll be with the newly created ad hoc committee, right?
Right. The, um, Public Funding Committee.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
I'll vote for it.
So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this. Um, Trustee Andrews.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Capel.
Yes.
Trustee Khan.
Yes.
Trustee McMollins.
Yes.
That's an I vote for me as well, so that's unanimously approved. Thank you for the discussion, guys. That was really helpful. Um, this is a, this is a big one, and I think we're going to have a lot more iterations of this discussion, you know, next month and, and probably in the months to come. I don't think that this is a problem with an easy solution. Um, and so I really, I really appreciate hearing wherever it is coming from on this. Okay, um, on to eight C, review of a proposed budget. This is beginning on page one eighty-nine of your packet. Uh, we talked about this a little bit during the budget committee report. This month, we are just looking at the proposed budget. It does include an allocation for the money that we just talked about, um, for political consulting that was already wrapped into this. Um, Nicole, do you want to talk about the proposed budget a little bit?
Sure, I'm happy to talk about it.
Thank you.
Um, so the, kind of the main difference year to year, um, between this fiscal year and next fiscal year, you'll see that, that top line, number two, that drawdown to reserves. We talked about this a little bit, the additional funds that we're going to be adding for consulting work, and also the trustee election coming of this year, and then some capital improvement projects is why you're seeing a big increase there year to year, the money that we're pulling out of reserves. So even though, um, the revenue line, number thirty-three, it looks like we do have an increase revenue this year as opposed to last year. That's really just the money that we're pulling out of reserves to fund these additional projects for next fiscal year. Um, and then Terry kind of spoke to the wages line and why that has changed. And we talked a little bit about materials and why that looks different. And the capital improvement projects were briefly mentioned in the facilities matrix in the facilities report. And then Christopher also has some capital improvement projects that he'd like to implement next fiscal year, including some E-rate upgrades and a DVD lending machine over at the branch. Uh, and then we did mention the brief kind of decrease in programming just due to us being closed and not being able to spend as much over the summer. We did up summer reading just a little bit, hoping that next summer we'll be able to spend a little bit more of that funding. Um, those are the highlights. I mean, I'm happy to go line by line again, or I can just answer questions. Has questions, if anything jumps out at you.
This is Jason, and this might be because I missed, uh, a couple meetings ago, but, um, I don't understand why we are not budgeting any increases for the cost of insurance.
We are for most.
Health and dental and all that stuff.
Oh, I see. Um, I do get those rates from the carriers, and, um, I think life insurance increased, but the other ones remained the same for this year. I do get the rates for health insurance. And they're effective January, so that might result in a mid-year budget increase. And for the remainder of the year, those are going to.
Got it. Okay.
And then Nicole, I had a question, a clarifying question. We, the original proposed budget had a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar drawdown from reserves. And we, we up that to two hundred and thirty-three to carry, take care of those various expenses you talked about. But was there talk about raising that even a little bit more? I'm trying to remember.
We, well, the bulk of it is the consulting line item, uh, which is line one oh four on the sheet. I had originally only budgeted thirty thousand to account for the political consultant, which obviously was way under budget. So we added the seventy thousand, which is where that difference between the one sixty-six and the two thirty-three is coming in. Um, we, we do have money budgeted for the election this year, um, for the trustee election. And my thought was, I don't think that the county. And my thought was, I don't think that the county increases their fee based on how many ballot measures you have. They're still doing the same amount of of counting, you know, because the same number of ballots are being turned in. So I don't know that that would increase at all if we were to get it on the ballot for November.
Interesting.
That was my thought.
That's interesting application.
But that's why that line didn't increase any more than it already is. I'm assuming that they still have the same number of ballots to count. There's just the two, the two measures on the ballot.
That's, hmm, okay. Other questions for Nicole? Obviously, this is our proposed budget. It will come back next month to us to approve. Probably in largely the same form, although the budget committee will be meeting again before the June meeting. So there may be some, some alterations in light of what we find out in the class and comp study. Or, you know, what we find out from some of our public funding options.
This, did the foundation suggest only ten thousand dollars? Or was that based on, um, taste of Dina from last year?
Um, the ten thousand dollars is kind of just what, what they've always committed to over the years. Um, we do kind of meet with them and see what they're, what they're able to and what they feel most comfortable with. Um, and we did speak with Bridget and they agreed that ten thousand dollars would be an appropriate amount again for next fiscal year.
Is there any way we could sort of try to get them to up that to at least another ten thousand dollars through? I don't know what it would be and what that would look like, but it seems to be very low, just I, and I don't know how many people are sitting on that board anymore or anything like that. Well, let me move to this then. Technology. You're doing a lot with online and where did I see that? Where did I see the technology stuff? I'm lost.
Line one oh six is the IT budget, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay, maybe it's.
And Gwen, I had mentioned earlier that that IT budget is going to go up about sixteen percent or so. Because they have a bunch of new, but you know, not, I mean, I think they're staying in lockstep with the times, to tell you the truth. There's so much stuff that needs to be done remotely now and through the internet that I think that's money well spent.
And I understand that, but I was also trying to see the correlation between all of these programs and books and stuff like that. Is there a way to? I don't know. You're doing, um, you're increasing the budget for night, one nineteen, twenty um, five thousand for prayer, pierodics and, um, periodicals. And you've got downloadables, and I was just wondering. Seems to be that I, I, you know, if we're going more toward that, then it seems like some of this other, I, I don't know. Where, that we need to sort of do some cutting somewhere, I mean. It's one thing to draw on your reserves at two hundred and almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But it seems that there has to be some sort of give and take. Um, and, um, not that, and the library is doing a fabulous job. I, I, I understand that, but when you start talking about budgets, it seems to me that there has to be something that we, we do something about the funding. And I, you know, if our revenue is only coming through taxations. It just seems to me that we ought to look at this a little more critically. I, maybe, maybe I'm really wrong. But everything can't keep going up when you don't have the funding. And we're getting ready to spend another sixty thousand dollars. That's all I'm saying, and I don't know.
I'm with you a little bit, Gwen. I, I, I'm a fiscal conservative, I guess. But I do think that two things are in our favor right now. One is that we're probably going to come under budget this year. So we're going to have some money left over from expenditures. And the other thing is that this, we do feel good about the feasibility of going forward with this big project. There's going to be a lot of community momentum that gets wrapped up in this. And that's where we're going to see the gifts coming in, maybe not as much as we want, but people like are going to start getting involved in that kind of thing. It happens every time. So I, I was personally, from a recommendation point of view, I was pretty happy with this budget.
Um, I just wanted to add that we, we didn't actually budget for an increase in property taxes this year. Since we don't know where property taxes will fall for next fiscal year or for the year after that. So there's, there's zero increase there, and that's why the revenues do look a little less than they were this fiscal year. There's always the chance that we will get that two percent bump. We just don't know. So we did budget conservatively for revenue.
Okay. And I think that there are also, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about are rather than just trying to find five thousand dollars here or five thousand dollars there in light items. Are there structural things that we can do that will decrease our expenses, not just this year, but structurally over time, right? So looking at maybe changing the way we handle our OPEB contributions. Or looking at the way that we handle certain organizational challenges. I think that, you know, we're looking at not just this year with some revenue challenges. But quite honestly, I'm, I'm guessing a number of years where we have probably revenue challenges. And so I think finding, finding the most, the most bang for our buck in terms of what we can adjust. And what kind of long-term impact that has is really important. And, and that's where we come back to, you know, kind of some of those modeling questions about what impact various changes will have over time. Other comments or questions on the proposed budget? Again, we will talk about this next month. It'll come right back as an action item for us to vote on. So this is not the final word on any of it. We'll also have a budget committee meeting. Where we can get into it some more. Okay. All right, let us move on. To item eight D, a review of the board election timeline. This is truly an information item. This is on page one ninety three of your packet. I don't know that there's any huge conversation that needs to be had here, just that this is part of our attempt district-wide to provide more information, more transparency, more clarity, um, and additional resources to people. To try to make it easier for folks to navigate the process. This is, um, in the packet, but presumably all this stuff will go on the website as well.
And can I just thank Katie for all her work putting it together for me?
Oh, you're welcome. Any questions, conversation on this? I mean, I know we kind of talked about it earlier. When we were talking about this as a goal, uh, within the director's review. But is there anything anybody else would like to say at this point?
No, it's just the July thirteenth is the date I'm looking at, so, uh.
That's right.
The election thing, that's the, that's the big, yeah.
That's it.
Has anybody heard about anybody wanting to run for a seat? Is there any friends or folks you've spoken to?
Not yet.
I have not, but we should. We're going to have, you know, no shortage of, no shortage of seats to run for, so we, we need some qualified candidates. Oh, and I should say at this point, that obviously, um, because Gwen's resignation will take effect on, uh, June first. We will conduct, uh, an appointment process, a vacancy appointment process. So we will, um, you know, go ahead and post that notice of vacancy sooner rather than later. We'll get that done in the next day or two. We'll get the criteria up. And we'll figure out how to conduct that, um, appointment process at our next board meeting. Um, and, and we'll work with, uh, probably with BB and K a little bit, honestly, to, to verify that the appointment process we undertake is fair and equitable and, and, and meets all the requirements that we need to meet under, um, the election code and ed code rules that govern.
Can I also, can we also post Gwen's beautiful letter that she wrote?
We should, yeah.
I mean, there's a, there's a stark difference between that and the one that, uh, I remember seeing during my appointment, which was I hereby resign. So it made me think something was up at the library. Sure enough, it was. It was a very gracious letter, Gwen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was hoping to put it up with, um, like a supplemental document to the board package, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be great.
And then I don't want to run up costs, but the other thing I'm thinking about. Cause we're, you know, with these elections coming up. Um, and people, whether it's current board members or hopeful board members are going to be campaigning. Would, can we get BB and K to do like a simple one pager on just any pitfalls that current board members need to be aware of, whether it's Brown Act related when it comes to campaign stuff? Or even, you know, I don't know if there's any kind of restrictions on, you know, what we can say publicly if we're supporting one person or another, you know, donations. I, you know, I just want to make sure that all of the current board members that we are aware of any of that stuff, because I don't know any of it now. And, you know, I don't want any of us to get into a silly situation because we just simply didn't, didn't know.
That's a really, that's a really, yeah.
Okay, I made, I made a note to reach out, and I'm actually having a phone call with Ruben this week and maybe tomorrow. I think it's tomorrow, yeah.
That would be great.
Okay.
A really good idea.
And obviously that, you know, will be helpful for future board members too, because it's.
Yep.
And ask him about campaign funding, because if you're going to fund your campaign, that's one thing. But if you're going to get contributions from others, some of that has to be reported, and I'm not sure.
All of it.
All of it does. Well, and Gwen, that's why we've got the resources that are in this document. Because it directs people to the Fair Political Practices Commission and all the, all the rules, basically.
Okay, perfect.
Records of every penny spent and what you spend it on.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. Don't get you started.
Get you started.
But the candidate toolkit that is referenced on page one ninety four from the FPPC is a really helpful guide. And it does actually make it pretty user-friendly. I will say also for the record that there are upcoming webinars that they're holding on candidate, on, um, basically on, on campaign finance for candidates. So you can get that training for free. It's online. It may well be available on demand after that. But it's really worth it because they do walk you through all the forms you have to fill out. How you fill them out, when you fill them out, where you file them.
Right.
With whom, how frequently, and it's, it's, it's worth, it's worth knowing.
Well, I am just delighted to have been with all of you for so many years. And, um, I just know that you're going to do wonderful things. So I, that's my last comment, Betsy. I know you're going to do wonderful things.
Thanks, Gwen.
Thank you, Gwen. All right, guys, we've got one more item of, uh, new business, and so this is item eight E. Um, this is a letter of support for the Altadena Sheriff's Station. Before we get to this item, I do actually have a public comment that came in earlier that I will read into the record at this point, so you guys can hear it as well. All right, um. Okay, sorry. All right, so this public comment comes, uh, to us from Deb Halberstadt. And she says, quote, "If the Altadena Sheriff's Station were to close, except for patrol units, Altadena would lose all the station's involvement with our community, like holiday time toys and food giveaway, National Night Out, the annual car show, the station captain's participation in many meetings like the Altadena Town Council, Akona and Neighborhood Watch Meetings, SENS, for instance, community relations officers, welfare checks for the elderly, sheriff station volunteers and volunteers on patrol, the explorer program for teens, community emergency response team members, Altadena search and rescue team, Vida for troubled teens, vacation checks, support for Christmas tree lane, parking patrol for unwanted vehicles, LASD school support officer." It would increase response time for all crime and safety issue, including citizens and businesses. Sheriff Villanueva has not, quote, backed down from his decision to cripple the station. Many of the programs mentioned are already gone or have no LASD involvement. So thank you to Deb for her public comment.
Yeah, that's very good.
And she's right on.
She is.
Deb has an amazing, amazing level of involvement in the community. The amount of things that she's involved in just boggle the mind. So if she's saying it's a bad thing, I'm going to believe it's a bad.
It is a bad thing.
Truly. Um, so on this letter, I, uh, I want to give you guys a little bit of background and then we can talk about it. So obviously, there's been no shortage of coverage, and I'm sure you guys have been following along about the first closure and then reduction, serious, serious reduction in service for Altadena Sheriff's Station. So this letter, um, with my best attempt to strongly state a position of, um, of disapproval without, you know, drawing serious lines in the sand. I think that, you know, my own personal feeling is, is probably quite a bit stronger than, than this letter expresses. But I wanted to be as, as fair and representative as I could. So this is, this is my best pass at it, but I, I want to say that I'm very open to changes, to additions, to modifications. And, and wanted to present to you guys as a starting point for a statement. I do think that it's very important for us to make a statement. I do think it's important for us to support the station in all that they do. I mean, Deb really nailed it. Like, there's so much that our sheriff station does. And following the town hall that happened, um, last week, it was very clear that, you know, the current plan is, is to reduce our sheriff station to basically, you know, a locker room or a parking lot, you know, for patrol cars. And to remove the leadership, um, and the, and the staff that's assigned there currently, which is a huge loss for our community.
Katie, are you saying that you're taking suggestions on that letter itself?
I absolutely am.
Okay, so you haven't delivered it yet?
Nope, because it's a statement from the board, so we would need to vote to approve it. But I wanted to give you guys something to react to, um, so, yeah.
I have one, I, I just have one thing.
Okay.
And I would get rid of the word appalled, shocking, appalled. I would get rid of appalled and maybe put shocked and worried or something like that. When I read it, it kind of punched me a little bit, so just for what it's worth. And, you know, any excuse that, that sheriff, yes, Villanueva, to, you know, be defensive, he's probably going to take it, so.
How do you feel about dismayed?
There you go, dismay is great.
You got it. All right.
Um, there's, I'm kind of in the same boat as Katie, you know, where I stand personally, which, you know, really doesn't have any say over what we, decisions we make as a board on this matter. Um, I would say that, you know, I do believe it fits within our strategic plan to take a position on it, especially having heard from Deb's comment. All of the things that are going to be impacted, you know, the least of which is, is the safety of, of our patrons. Once we reopen, especially for the larger public gatherings like Christmas tree lane. You know, I spent eight years working inside the sheriff department as a union rep. And the one thing I can absolutely assure you is, you know, when they're facing a hundred million plus, you know, budget constraint, the three million that they might save with this plan on our sheriff station is, is frankly a joke. And, you know, I think, I think the community should be as angry as they already are that we're being used. And, you know, I think, I think the community should be as angry as they already are that we're being used as a political pawn in the fight between the sheriff and, and the board of supervisors. Yeah, and I think, so I, you know, I think it, you know, it is important as the only officially elected body representing all of Altadena that we, we do make it known that the community is, is not pleased with this decision.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good move and you're right, Jason, they use this as a, this isn't the first time, as you know, it's happened a couple, few, few times over the years. They use this as kind of a bargaining chip for what they wanna do.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think being the way they didn't do himself any favors with how he handled the meeting last week. I sat through, I think, two and a half hours of it. And there's just no ownership of it at all.
He didn't, he didn't even show, he didn't even show for the first one.
That's right.
Yeah, no, it was, it was pretty appalling. And I say that as my sort of personal opinion. It's, it's very difficult to hear somebody talk to our neighbors and blame them for decisions that were made unilaterally by the sheriff's department. And I just, I know how hard our, our station works. I know how hard the deputies and the captain work. And it just is, it's really unfair. And it's not just unfair to them, but it's, I feel like it's really unfair to Altadena in the grander scheme of LA County. Real quick, we do have a public comment. Oh, okay, great. All right, go for it.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to say to you, as we look at the, the values that we've stated in our strategic plan and our vision and our goals and all of those various things. We have a duty as an elected board, you have a duty as an elected board to speak on behalf of the community, to be the neighbor that you, that we claim to be. The sheriff's department is a very vital part of our neighborhood. So don't question at all, in my opinion, your need and responsibility to respond. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you.
And, you know, the last thing I'll just say again too, is I think having that leadership with a, you know, a constant presence in the community leads to extremely different outcomes in how our community interacts with those responsible for our safety. And I think the easiest way to understand that is to look at the difference between how our community has worked with the sheriff department versus how some communities in the city of Pasadena have had to deal with the city of Pasadena police. And I believe there's a stark difference. And I would much rather Altadena continue on our current path and our current relationship instead of taking a chance with, with something different.
You said it well, Jason.
All right, so this is an action item, which means we would need a motion and a vote to go ahead and approve this letter with the amended language.
I offer the motion that we send this letter with that one correction.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Again, as an action item, we're gonna take a roll call vote on this, so.
Oh, yep, go ahead. Can I just make two copy editing?
Sure, please. Yeah, go for it.
In the, in the last paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six lines around the bottom, Carrie should have two Rs.
Thank you.
And also, I didn't know for sure, but I just looked it up. In the last line, well-being has a hyphen.
What are we gonna do without a librarian on?
I know. You know, I know it's late, but you need to know that when I was in third grade. I was in a play and the role that I played was Miss Dictionary. And somebody left me open and broke my spine. It was a very dramatic.
You got your revenge, Betsy.
Really did. Yeah, you should have. Thank you.
Live that down my whole life.
I appreciate that. All right, perfect. So we'll make those adjustments. All right, so we, uh, we've, it's been moved and seconded, so we'll go ahead and proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Yes.
Okay, trustee Capel.
Yes.
Trustee Khan.
Yes.
Trustee McMillan.
Yes.
And it's a yes vote for me, so that is unanimously approved. I will make sure those edits get made and we will get that out ASAP. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, guys, we made it. We got all the way to item nine. We have in the packet, no correspondence this month that I'm aware of. I don't believe we have any other public comments that have come in other than the ones we've had. And thank you so much to everybody who has commented. Proposed future agenda items, we are gonna have a busy agenda in June. We'll have vacancy appointment for Gwen's seat. We'll have the budget. We'll have some kind of action item presumably based on what comes from our public funding committee and our consultants. I would be surprised if we didn't have something to make a decision on by that point. Nikki, I'm sure you've got a pretty good list on your.
I was gonna say, we'll also have the presentation of the class and comp study.
Yes, that's right. We'll have the class and comp study.
And because we're meeting a week early, we have an extra week to get ready.
Thank goodness. Yeah. Great.
That was a very big smile for me.
Do we have any other proposed future agenda items that we wanna make sure get on? As always, you can always just email me or Nikki at any point if you think of something that you wanna get on that agenda. I will make sure it shows up if you can. No? Okay. Well, then it remains only for me to thank you guys so much for a yeoman's effort, six hours and sixteen minutes of, of meeting today, which I think has gotta be some kind of personal best. I'm not sure, but.
Much different than your other personal best there, Katie.
This must be the longest meeting.
I think it must be.
You wouldn't know, Gwen.
I would like to give a huge round of applause to Gwen and just say, we're huge.
I owe that to you guys. You've done a tremendous job.
Thank you, Gwen. Yeah, thank you. And thank you to all of our staff and Nikki and to everybody for sticking it out. And I hope that all of you guys stay safe and stay well. We will see you for our various committee meetings and we'll see you back, back here on Zoom for our June meeting. And so with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Excellent. Any objection? Hearing none, I declare us adjourned at ten seventeen PM.
Good evening, everyone.
Everybody. Bye, Gwen.
Bye-bye.
Video may take a couple days to process, just since it's such a long meeting, just an FYI. The YouTube video may take a little longer than normal to get up on the YouTube page, so.
Like, we're all gonna get off this call and go watch it now, you think?
Yeah, oh boy.
If anyone's wanting to watch it later, it'll be probably a few days.
Bye, everybody.